We're now going to have the student representatives speak out and we always look forward to it very much so. And in the house is our Springfield Public Day School, supported by Linda Sinder, who's the assistant principal, Michael Dutton, who's a special ed teacher, and Mohammed Fahad, and Adriana Reyes. Are you around? See, I see, okay?
They're, they're working on getting in.
Okay, okay, we'll give it, we'll give it a minute or so and then we'll see if I introduce them, that's great too, opening comments. Oh Adriana, you look great.
Adriana Reyes, are you in? Go ahead, go ahead honey.
Yeah, I'm here.
How are you Adriana? The screen is yours here.
You want me to say my speech?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay. Hello, my name is Adriana Reyes, I attend Springfield Public Day Middle School. I am in eighth grade, my teachers are doing their best to make remote learning fun. For example, my math teacher uses fun things like decimals and algebra to make learning more interesting. In science, Mr. Cruz shows videos of cool experiments that make me understand science better. What I love most of all are my art classes, we get to draw, paint, and sketch. The she puts together bags of all kinds of art materials so we can still do art even though we are at home. Right now, we are working on testelations because it matches our geometry activities and math. Even though I would rather be in school, I am enjoying my classes and still feel like I'm learning a lot. Thank you for putting your time to listening to my speech and I hope you have a great day.
Nice job. Can you get a smile?
Mohammed, are you in?
Mohammed, are you, are you there?
He's trying to connect, one second.
Okay, take your time.
He's in. Mohammed, can you hear us?
Take your time Mohammed.
Mohammed, are you in? He's connecting.
Okay, thank you assistant principal's here.
All right Mohammed unmute and you're on.
Mohammed, how you doing? There we go.
Hi, my name is Mohammed, I'm, I am from Springfield Public Day Middle School and I'm here to, um, to represent my school and, um, we're gonna be, ah.
You're doing fine Mohammed, you're doing fine.
My computer's getting broken up. Okay, my name is Mohammed and I'm here to represent my school. There's three things that are good in my school, one thing is that I got good teachers and good staff and I got good people in there and one thing that I love about it is because I got one big favorite, favorite teacher, his name is Mr. Dutton and he's my favorite and like helped me out, they helped me out a lot and it was pretty hard to learn English for me. So it's probably like my, I'm not good in it, I'm not good in English. I'm not from this country, so it was pretty hard, I learned English in two months and it's hard for me to read and write. So if you ever have that problem, don't give up on yourself because if you give up, you, you, you can't, you can, you can still come back, but don't give up. So thank you for all this time.
Mohammed, that was right for me, that was matter of fact, first time ever in the school committee's history, NAS, Niger Jennings, this is Springfield Public Day through high school, he's your student representative for the school committee. How do you like that? Way to go Mohammed, okay. Springfield Public Day School continues, this is middle school, this Springfield Public Day High School. Isaiah Barnhill, Tommy De La Rosa, supported by I think it's Wendy Wee Martin, special ed teacher. Ms. Martin, I don't know, Wendy, I don't know if you want to say a few things before they hop on?
Hi, Mrs. Martin here, I'm school counselor over at Springfield Public Day High School. Tommy and Isaiah are here to represent our school for this year. So Tommy and Isaiah, you have the floor.
All right, all right, so, good afternoon ladies and gentlemen of the school committee, members and fellow students, my name is Tommy De La Rosa.
My name's Isaiah Barnhill.
As students of Springfield Public Day High School, we would like to share some experiences about virtual learning and coping during this pandemic. At our school, we are fortunate to have a multitude of staff who use creative methods of instruction to engage and meet our students' needs. While we have some advantages of learning from home, like coming to class in pajamas, being able to work from our couches, it is often difficult with many distractions, the TV and game console are near and often everyone else in the house is doing other things, sometimes it can get noisy.
Also, at school, our teachers can use cool video games, videos and other things to get our attention on the lessons. Our counselors run the groups twice a week discussing topics of resiliency, self-care, they generally offer support whenever we need it. Every day, we choose three community building groups to integrate with our peers. Sometimes getting extra help with schoolwork when needed. One of our biggest problems is dealing with like listening to computer technical issues and multiple learning platforms and challenges in being in front of a computer all day, which were our biggest challenges. It's finding our motivation to commit to online learning every day. However, our staff and counselors encourage us to find the right setting and allow us to be creative by uses of time to complete assignments. We are grateful for having such a great learning environment, even there of remote learning, thank you.
Dynamic duo, Tommy and Isaiah. Okay STEM Middle Academy's in the house, Alina Martinez, Jada Alejandro, Mia Murph, and they are accompanied by Jamie Warren, the science teacher, and I saw Louis Martinez, a proud parent and principal, so Mr. Principal Martinez, maybe you'd like to open up first?
Absolutely, it is a pleasure to present three of our incoming sixth grade and our amazing sixth grade science teacher and I'm gonna let Ms. Karens introduce our students.
Thank you, Principal Martinez, Ms. Karens?
Um, so is it okay if I screen share because they will have a short presentation they wanted to share?
That's great.
Awesome, okay, are your ladies ready? Okay.
I see Mia. Oh wow.
When you guys are ready, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Welcome to STEM Middle Academy, I'm Jada.
I'm Alina.
And I'm Mia.
Welcome to STEM.
This is our social studies teacher, Ms. Lester, we learn different, learn about different types of maps, geographical features and five themes of geography.
This is our math teacher, Mr. Green, he gives us shoutouts for doing our best, gives us tips and tricks if we need help, tells us take risks and learn from your own mistakes and always says, practice makes perfect.
This is our science teacher, Ms. Karens, we did this experiment including bottle rockets, volcanoes, and moon leaps. We also emailed some NASA scientists to answer some of our questions. This was a mix between ELA and art, this was our where I'm from self-portraits. And on the left-hand side, you'll see a little piece of my poem and in the middle, you'll see my self-portrait. My poem says, I'm from friends and family from swimming and splashing, from games of joy, from the salty smell and tropical storms.
We love STEM.
Awesome job.
That was good, that was very, very good. Thank you. I, I know that I saw Principal Clark, Zenetti Montessori's in the house and Kelly Shay, ELA and history teacher also, but Melena Donovan, Charlie Kamerski, correct me if I'm wrong, and Evelyn, that's, that's I'm gonna pronounce that wrong, I know you can't believe it on that, so please correct me on that. So let Principal Clark go first and Principal Clark, please correct me on some couple of those names. I'd rather embarrass myself than try to say them.
That's, that's fine mayor, that is Evelyn Bouilla, so we have Charlie Kamerski and Melena Donovan and Mrs. Shay, our ELA teacher, thank you for having us.
First?
Charlie.
Charlie, go ahead. You're breaking up a little bit.
So we must be having technical difficulty, we don't have to put an IT ticket in though. So we'll move on to the next speaker there.
Yeah, Melena knows her part.
Go ahead Melena.
How are you?
Good. Okay, um, so Charlie wrote this, but since she's having some technical difficulties, I'll just read it for her. So today, we're sharing how Zenetti Middle School is continuing to thrive and succeed even though we're not in our regular learning spaces. And many things have changed since the last school year. While school has been drastically affected by COVID-19, we're all continuing to adjust and putting our best effort into our work. We're now completely online for school, but many things have stayed the same. We continue to take regular classes, although our classes are a mix of synchronous and asynchronous work and lessons every day.
We just, this is the first time
Lessons, um, sorry, classes help students on time management and staying focused even if there isn't a teacher there with you. We have advisory every morning and afternoon of school for attendance and daily debriefs. Afternoon advisory focuses on helping us take initiative by leading our classes and getting ready for high school and eventually college through our Naviance program. The past few weeks, the students have been directing our advisory, coming up with fun group games to play or motivational videos to speak, to watch. And have also been doing Naviance with our middle school counselors. Naviance is a program that helps prep you for college and help you find what you might be interested in in doing as a career one day. I've noticed that in my class, we're all hardworking and everyone is still trying to learn even though there are many challenges that we're all facing.
Very good, Elena, thank you on behalf of Charlie. Evelyn, are you on Evelyn?
Yes.
Okay Evelyn.
Thank you Melena and Charlie, good evening, I am Evelyn Bouilla, an eighth grader at Zenetti Montessori School. At our school, we're participating in fully remote learning. During these times, we've used our problem-solving skills to overcome something so unexpected. We middle schoolers have used technology to broaden our education in a variety of ways while staying connected as a close school community. Over the summer, Zenetti organized a safe pickup in which 404 students received a bag of textbooks, notebooks, writing supplies, and an agenda. Middle school now has a variety of free supplies to do the best work they possibly can as well as the personal laptops we brought home from school in March last school year. With specific schedules and an organized variety of synchronous and asynchronous classes, time management has become so much easier. Middle school has access to our assignments, due dates, and other online resources with Unified Classroom, for example. Middle school teachers have been very specific about class plans and expectations, so it's much easier to organize my time and get all of my work done in a timely fashion. Attendance has also been impacted for the better with the new online system. When we were learning remotely last school year, many students did not attend their classes due to technical difficulties, confusion, or other issues. This year, we have more organization and a better understanding of our online resources and middle school students are joining class much more frequently. As well as attending class more often, students have been participating in class a lot more than they would last year in school and from home. Although school isn't in person, middle school students and teachers at Zenetti Montessori School have been more organized and focused with remote learning and we now feel more connected and successful than before.
Evelyn, you're hired, very good, good job. Elena, Charlie, thank you very, very much, thank you very, very much.
We still have one more part to our speech. Yeah. So I'm Melena Donovan and I'm also an eighth grader at Zenetti and since COVID-19 has forced students and educators to participate in remote learning, we have found many unique and creative ways to stay connected and become more self-reliant. For example, at the beginning and end of every school day, we have an advisory block that allows us to wind down while still doing academic activities. We are encouraged to share ideas and become leaders. Student leaders volunteer to lead the class and choose school-appropriate activities for the class to participate in. Some of these student-led activities include watching inspirational videos, playing group games, and other creative academic exercises. Advisory also gives us the chance to stay connected with our peers even though we're not in the same learning environment. We have used the breakout room tool on teams to get into smaller groups to do activities. We've also used email to keep in contact with students and teachers. There are many features that we use in remote learning that make school easier for students as well as teachers. We use Unified Classroom to receive and hand in work. We can also use Unified Classroom to communicate with our teachers and see our grades. Using tools such as Unified Classroom, Teams, Office 365, McGraw-Hill, Naviance, iReady, and so many more, they help us to learn, learn and review new concepts. Thanks to the support that we're getting from the city and the Zenetti staff, we're learning to adapt to this new normal. Thank you so much for your time and I hope you have a great evening.
Beautiful, wow, beautiful play, you all be great, thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, Professor Clark, and Ms. Shay, thank you. We're gonna finish up with South End Middle School, I know I saw Cheryl, Principal Desper is here, I know that. Aleah Burton is going to take the stage, I don't know if Principal Desper, Cheryl, if you'd like to say anything first, open up?
Good evening everyone, let me present to you Ms. Aleah Burton, an eighth grader in our school.
Aleah, beautiful.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good. My name is Aleah Burton and I attend South End Middle School. We are a PDSB school, that stands for Positive Behavior Intervention System. We go by four core values, being responsible, ready, respectful, and striving for excellence. By following those expectations, we get rewarded for our good behavior. Because of the pandemic that hit us in March, we're unable to attend school physically this year and in replacement of that, we now have remote learning. There are a lot of pros and cons of this type of learning. I'm one in the ones who struggles with it, but I'm still managing to get good grades. When we first started remote learning, I thought it was gonna be the worst thing in the world. But seven weeks into school, it has gotten a bit easier. Getting all our work done has been easier as well as getting better grades. Even though we can't physically get prizes, the teachers still do activities that will make us want to come to school and get, work hard to get good grades. Like tomorrow, everyone that has 90% or better attendance gets to go to a mini Halloween bash the teachers are having. We're having a scary story room of Halloween contest, a rotten jokes room, and a few more. To get ready for this new school year online, Wilbingham United Church has sent us all burgundy back facets or school logos on it. They gave us notebooks, workbooks, a pencil case filled with pens and pencils and more. The teachers worked on a donor's choice project and brought us each a laptop desk so we will all have a place to work. Wilbingham United Church also did a school supply drive for our school. Thank you for continuing to support all we do at South End Middle School in having me speak tonight.
Aleah, beautiful job, Aleah. We heard some people in the background wanting to be okay, and mom or dad, family, check the battery in the smoke detector, okay? We want you to be okay, okay? Great job Aleah. That concludes our student speak-out, we'll be back in session for 6:30 unless we miss anybody else, that's all I had on the list. So thank you everyone and keep up the good work, we're proud of each and every one of you, teachers, administration staff, students, and families. Thank you.
Thank you everyone, great job.
Thank you. Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order, first of all, I want to thank both Springfield, both Sway for again getting us to the public very much so. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Hurst?
She was on, I know You're muted Denise, Denise, you're muted. Ms. Hurst? I know she was on during the she might, we're muted, she might be, okay, why don't we, let's continue the roll.
Attorney Murphy?
Present.
Ms. Naylor?
She might be a minute late, she said she would moving unfortunately, so she, she might be a minute late, she said.
Ms. Gresham?
Present.
Perez?
Mrs. Perez sent me a message that she had a, a personal item come up and she's not gonna be near wifi, won't be able to participate tonight but wants to be updated because it's an important conversation she wanted to hear about.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mayor Sarno?
President, could you please call Ms. Hurst again?
Ms. Hurst?
Denise, if you're on, you're muted. Okay, we'll all please rise for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag Thank you very much everyone.
Ms. Hurst?
Again, she was on during the middle school, high school speak-out. Okay, when the, she's on, we'll move forward. There are no minutes for approval, there are no voting items tonight, but this is a very, very important meeting that we're having. This is a discussion to update on ventilation report for O'Reilly, Talbot, Oak and Associates Incorporated and a discussion around the school reopening. Let me introduce the individuals that are here who have done yeoman work. And again, this is my RD, R2D2 here for your Star Wars fanatics. We have Pat Sullivan, who is my facilities and parks director, who's done a wonderful job and his right hand here, John Kerrigan, which will be doing a presentation a system that we're going to be moving to put in. And of course, Bob Kirchner is here from Talbot, O'Reilly Talbot Open Association. And my, our, Dr. Anthony Fauci, which he's done a tremendous job. Our commissioner, my commissioner of health and human services, Helen Carlton Harris. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over, I don't, that superintendent, would you like to open up with some words first?
Thank you mayor, yeah, we told the school committee we'd bring you back, O'Reilly, to give you recommendations for what we should do relative to ventilation. Again, we were checking the ventilation systems, we do not have an air quality problem in the buildings and this report is gonna show you what a great job our facilities department has done and I wanna tip my cap to Pat and John Kerrigan. And a great partner through this pandemic has been our public health commissioner, Helen Carlton Harris, who's been with us all the way advising us, but Bob has done a thorough report so that we can ensure the safety of our students and staff and I'd like to turn it over to Bob.
Madam Clerk, would you please recognize Ms. Hurst?
Ms. Hurst, present.
Yes, my apologies.
I just want to thank everyone, I see Pat Roach and TK are on the call, they've been tremendous and given us the support to get coordinating the custodians and so forth with John to get Bob through these buildings. And Bob's done a very thorough job and we're really proud of the work that we've put together. So as you move forward to make your decisions, I think you'll have the information that you will need to make decisions.
Thank you very much. I just want to really thank Bob, thank you mayor, superintendent, and school committee, you made an investment that's well worth the money because you're going to hear a report that I believe is very thorough and will alive all of the fears we might have about city buildings, so thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Carlton Harris. Mr. Kirchner, would you like to come up here and present please? Thank you. Oh Patty, you're gonna post Patty, do you have the PowerPoint?
I can post it if you'd like, uh, just, just one moment. Yeah.
Again, this is a very, very thorough report and please, we're gonna do whatever we have to make sure our buildings are safe and sound for everyone when it's appropriate, when it's appropriate.
We'll have to, that's all 57 buildings.
Besides, uh, school we're still, and then he's also, Mr. Kirchner is also doing reviews on my city side buildings also.
You're all set to go. Thank you Patty, thanks Patty. You can just tell him to move to the next slide.
I think I can do it. I think I'm doing it.
Patty, Bob will tell you when to move to the next slide.
Can we get into I don't have this problem with my answer sketch, I'll tell you that. I have this problem with the middle school students either, they've done a great job. All right, I'm gonna let yeah, that's what I'm doing. Thank you for your patience everybody, it's really all right, I'm just gonna go with it like this here. Can everybody see that? Yes. Okay. Technical difficulty, there we go. So thank you mayor, Commissioner Sullivan, superintendents, school committee members. I'd like to thank the opportunity and be able to present this assessment that O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oak and has done with regards to ventilation and filtration throughout all of the schools. So this is something that was rather intense, there's a lot of work to it. As you mentioned, it included all 50, well 55 of this city-owned buildings. And just a, I kind of as an introduction, I just want to reemphasize, superintendent mentioned that all of the buildings currently all meet the Massachusetts Building Code and they're all inspected on an annual basis. You know, by the city building officials, fire department, bike safety code, and all of those conditions are in place and the buildings are safe, they're safe to be in. So this is not a safety assessment, this is a ventilation assessment and filtration assessment.
This is a ventilation assessment and filtration assessment as required and suggested by DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as the ASHRAE standards that we talked about here. So Patty, can you move? Yeah, Patty, are you moving or?
I, I can certainly do it if you prefer me to.
Yeah, but why don't you do it? Another point I just want to make too is that O'Reilly Talbot and Oak and both myself, I'm an industrial hygienist certified safety professional. We have other certified indoor air quality professionals within our company who you know, took part in this assessment. And we were all very pleasantly surprised as to really what we found. We found the condition in the maintenance, not only the building's general conditions, but the HPA C, the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems throughout these buildings were well maintained. It's a little different than what we see in a lot of the other school systems and districts, not only in Massachusetts, but in other nearby states. So, when we first saw that, it was a nice shot in the arm for us. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, we follow the DESI guidelines. And the DESI guidelines for reopening schools and for providing an HPA C assessment, they were somewhat vague. They were somewhat subjective. And we were looking for some greater detail. And we had recommended and through consultation with city officials, we've recommended we follow the ASHRAE protocols. Now, the ASHRAE protocol, ASHRAE is American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers. This is the consensus group that develops the standards to which all of the international Building Code, international existing Building Code, and what Massachusetts Building Code is also adopted. So, when you open the Massachusetts Building Code, it does mention all of the ASHRAE consensus codes, which are, have been implemented into the Building Code. It's a very strict standard. Now, ASHRAE, as part of their organization of professionals and engineers, they developed an epidemic task force with the sole goal of giving guidance and giving recommendations for what schools and universities should do to open after this or during this pandemic situation. So, ASHRAE again, much, much more stringent, much more detailed, much more objective than what DESI is. We recommended that and that was agreed to by the city official. Next slide, please. So, the ASHRAE, what they go back one, please. And the ASHRAE protocol, first of all, they recommend a number of things prior to open for post-COVID or during COVID conditions. First thing they suggest is they want to review the operation, make sure that the HPA C and the controls for all of these building systems are operable in good working condition. They recommend and suggest additional volume of fresh air coming in to assist with the lubing, any potential movements that may accumulate within the classroom. They also recommend the increase of filtration, the efficiency of the filtration. They recommend MERV thirteen filters we use for all HPA C units. Now, the MERV stands for Minimum Efficiency Reporting Value. It is a scale on which filters are designated. Typical commercial building would operate with a MERV six to eight filtration rating. We in the city of Springfield are following the ASHRAE guidelines and recommendations. And we are increasing the filtration for all of the schools to the MERV thirteen filter, which is a very efficient and high-rated filter. ASHRAE also recommended that we do not, and we do the best we can to prevent re-entering contaminated air into the building. So, the first thing we think about is exhaust from buildings and thoughts from restrooms. That usually gets discharged up from the stack through the roof. They want to make sure that all of our fresh air intakes are a certain distance from those discharges. So, we don't re-entract air back into the building. Okay, next slide. So, in summary, just describing city of Springfield buildings, the city of Springfield public buildings, fifty-five school buildings that we use for educational use in classrooms for approximately twenty-five thousand students. And these buildings range in age from, you know, the eighteen nineties to the present. We've had some school building built in the recent years, such as Elias Perkins. I call it, I call it, you know, the old, the brand new, and then we have a bunch in the middle. These older buildings, and we mentioned them here, Breitwood, Homer, Kenzy, and Bridge Academy. They rely on a steam perimeter radiation system. This is a system that's typical for buildings of that age. We have a lot of homes in apartment buildings that use perimeter steam radiation today. These buildings, four buildings here, these buildings lack the mechanical systems to provide fresh air ventilation. They rely on natural ventilation. Natural ventilation, meaning the opening of windows, opening of doors, and just general building leaks. These buildings were never originally designed to be well insulated. So, we have a lot of air that automatically purges into that building. But it's not, it's not done mechanically as the remaining fifty-one schools are. So, that is, that is a concern for those four. And we will need to provide some supplemental engineering controls. And we have a number of them we'll talk about tonight that we recommend and suggest to be able to bring those four schools to an ASHRAE acceptable level. Next slide, please. So, here is, as Mayor entered mentioned, we have our two B two sitting right behind you. This is, this is a very high-efficiency filtration unit. In general, we'll talk about it and demonstrate for you in a little bit. But this unit here, we, we use these units and these units are used exclusively in some pharmaceutical operations. They're used in some surgical suites. They will operate a certain volume of air in its HEPA filter. So, high-efficiency particulate air, the filter through this unit is much, much more efficient on a MERV rating than the thirteen. This unit far exceeds the MERV thirteen. This is around a MERV twenty, which is behind me. HEPA by definition is designed to filter ninety-nine point nine seven percent of all particulate rated in point three micron. So, it is typically the highest level filtration that we can achieve through mechanical systems.
Bob, do you want John to brief thing right now?
Let's, let's go, if you don't mind. Let's just go and then if there's questions, because I'm sure it's full committee members may have questions. Next slide, please. So, this is an example of the typical steam radiation. When you look at the left, you can see a pipe coming in, that steam coming in. It goes through the radiation unit, which expands, it gives it surface area, it provides heat. And then steam will then come out, what you see on the right side of the slide. And it'll either go on to another radiator unit or it'll continue back to the to the loop, bringing it back to the boiler room where it gets reheated. So, this is an older system for heat. And you typically won't see this in new constructed buildings, but this is what we have in those four classrooms. Next slide. So, the majority of our Springfield buildings, I call it the middle, the middle gap. These aren't the brand new ones nor are they, are they, you know, old construction. This is typically the nineteen fifties to the nineteen seventies. And when these buildings were constructed, they used what we call a unit ventilator. A unit ventilator is a wall-mounted mechanical unit. There is a mover and a vent that allows fresh air to come in from the exterior, from the outside. It then meets up with return air that comes in from within the classroom. It then goes through a filter, filtering process. Goes through a heating coil and then gets discharged throughout the room. These units are very efficient. They're, they work well. Most of our classrooms within this period of time rely on unit ventilator. And we get more, like I said, they're mostly associated with the perimeter of a wall, the exterior wall, which is where the majority of classrooms go. With regards to larger rooms, such as gymnasiums, auditoriums, you know, some of the office areas, they rely on a mechanical air handling system. They call it air handling units, could be mounted on the roof, could be mounted within, you know, the mechanical space. But these take care of large rooms and it relies on, again, forced air ventilation. Takes in fresh outside air and keeps it, mixes it with internal air, and then discharges it up. It's important to note that through all of these buildings, initially, we, the filtration system that we're in, all of the unit ventilators were that MERV six through MERV eight rating. We were able to, within the facility HPA C department in the building of City of Springfield, we were able to secure a vendor special order. We have UL listed MERV thirteen filters specifically designed for all of our unit systems, which is, which is significant. So, all of these units will have the high-level filtration, which ASHRAE and DESI are looking for moving forward. Next slide, please. So, this is an example of a larger air handling unit. This is an air handling unit at Kennedy Middle School. Without my glasses, I believe it is maybe the media center. And you can see the, how this unit works. It has fresh outside air coming in from, from the left. It goes through a luber. It's supplied that comes up from, from the bottom, that little stub or T, stem of the T. That is return air and it's coming back to the classroom. So, we'll take a certain percentage of return air, certain percentage of fresh outside air. It will then pass through a filter, which now will be a MERV thirteen filter. It goes through a heating coil where it's tempered to the right temperature that we need for that area. And then will pass through a fan or a blower and be discharged out as discharge air through the right side of the, of the slide. And then that will be discharged either throughout the classroom or throughout the HPA C zone or whatever the, how that system has been designed in terms of, of the zoning or location. Next slide, please. So, one of the questions that always comes up with unit ventilators is, is, you know, do they provide the proper filtration? They're older units, there's a fifties to, you know, seventies units, although even you can still buy replacement unit ventilators. And they're still being installed in schools as a replacement. So, it's a mechanical unit that has a one-inch filter. Like I mentioned, we're able to secure MERV thirteen filters. So, we, we accomplish the filtration. The question that came up is, do we have the right volume of air being circulated here? So, we've done a number of tests, representative classrooms. And it gave you an example of what we've done here. This is a typical classroom that we measured. We measured every classroom from schools, the representative classroom that we were in for each school. And we say a typical classroom, thirty-six feet by twenty-four feet, eleven-foot ceilings. And our goal here, by building code and ASHRAE, is to achieve six air changes per hour. So, that's how much air is in this building. I want the same volume replaced, you know, six times within the hour. So, the math says, you know, six air changes times the volume of the space divided by sixty minutes an hour. It gives us a volume of air, nine hundred and fifty cubic feet per minute of air to make that six air changes per hour. In, in all of the units that we've looked at, we're able to achieve that nine hundred and fifty CFM of, of, of volume of air for those six air change. Next slide, please. So, the air changes is one component. And the, the second is just typical volume of fresh outside air. So, we, we, we talk, the, the unit has the capacity for the air change. It's now we got to look at how much fresh air can these introduce. So, a typical unit ventilator will provide seven hundred and fifty, fifteen hundred cubic feet per minute per unit. Some classrooms will have more than one unit. Some classrooms will have larger units with maybe, you know, three fans, three blowers. Some will be smaller with two. We've looked at the motor size, the RPM. We've looked at the fan, tried to get calculations as to what we've come up with. And so, basically, what we've done in this particular case here is we've settled on, you know, a volume. I can't see it without my glasses. Nine hundred CFM. We're assuming this unit will operate at nine hundred CFM. So, that could be that, that's kind of in the middle between the seven fifty and the fifteen hundred. I mean, we do have some fifteen hundred. And again, this is per unit. So, in some classrooms, we do have documentation, we'll have two or three units. So, that was then, is what we're going to find out. So, the second component of the ASHRAE ventilation standard is they have a requirement, guideline of ten cubic feet of fresh air per person. So, we estimated out in this classroom, we took an average of twenty students. Twenty students has ten CFM per person and it comes up to our two hundred CFM of outside air. So, we are recommending for each classroom with twenty students that we have a minimum of two hundred cubic feet per minute of fresh outside air. So, going extrapolating that off further, if I'm using that nine hundred CFM of volume that that unit ventilator is able to, to operate at, and I operate that damper, damper, fresh air damper at a twenty-five percent opening, I will achieve two hundred and twenty-five cubic feet per minute of fresh air. So, I, I meet and actually surpass, in this particular case, according to these calculations, the volume of outside fresh air into the classroom. It's also important to note that that's at twenty-five percent. There's no reason I can't operate that at thirty-five percent or fifty percent or even seventy-five percent. What will happen with that is the more outside fresh air that I bring in, the more difficult it is for the unit to maintain thermal comfort. What does that mean? It's, it means that I might not have the temperature throughout that classroom that I need, depending upon the outside temperature versus the inside temperature. So, we can look at that and modulate that. But for our assessment, it was important for us to recognize and document that the system, the unit, is capable of achieving the ten cubic feet per minute of fresh air per person as well as the six air changes per hour. Next slide, please. So, the, I call them, and I didn't know how better way to say it, newer school units. So, the newer school units, they're more efficient. They have more bells and engineering controls to them. We have dedicated outside air units that provide unit fresh air. But all of these newer units, and they will go from, let's say, like, you know, central commerce, side tech. These are what we would consider our newer school units. They all operate and meet the They all operate and meet the Ashray design for fresh air ventilation. Again, 10 CFM per student as well as the air changes per, per hour. Next slide. So this is a more complex and typical air handling unit that we're talking about. So you'll see, again, we have outside air coming in from, and Mickey, outside air may be coming in from the top and, and, and return air may be coming in from the left. But they go through, again, the same concept. They'll, the outside air and fresh air mix. They then go through several filters. Most of the newer units are air conditioned as well as heat. So it may, depending upon season, may go through a cooling coil or it may go through a heating coil depending upon time of year. Then again goes through a fan. If you look at this slide, you know, up close, you will see it, it allows us to monitor and measure any and all of the components necessary for efficient operation. This schematic and graphic that you have here, this is the one that came from the media center at Brookings, I believe. This is, this unit here, the, the schematic that we're seeing, this is state of the art. But what also is state of the art is this graphic that I'm showing you is part of a facility management program. It's a, it's a HVAC management program that pretty much, I don't wanna say all, but the majority of our schools are connected to. And this system is a computerized system. It feeds back to facilities management. And at any time, they can look at this and see the operational conditions of the unit. They can see outside temperature and they can see the temperature being discharged. They can see how efficient the filters are, whether they need to change. They can measure and monitor the static pressure across the unit. And, and when we first sat down with facility personnel and they started explaining their unit, we've never seen a, a school system with this, public school system, with this elaborate type of system. Or I wanna say, and John can comment in a minute, but it's not all schools because obviously, but it's, it's pretty close to, pretty close to all of our schools have this capability. So the key again here is if there's a air quality complaint, temperature or something doesn't seem right, they can make a call, it can be brought up on screen, you can do diagnostics, you can make adjustments. For example, this particular unit, analyzed Brookings relies on a carbon dioxide system. So this is a, a dedicated system. So carbon dioxide is generated as we exhale or expire. As we breathe, we discharge carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide. This system will sense that and it will sense the quantity of carbon dioxide within the space. And we can adjust the fresh air damper to allow more fresh air in as needed to accommodate and achieve lower levels and bring in more fresh air. This is incredibly significant when we're trying to achieve management of COVID within our classroom building. So this is, we were significantly impressed with this. Next slide please. This, this here is another device. We don't have one in the, in our room with us today, but this is an eye wave. It's a, it's an air purifier that is designed to be installed within a air handling system. We would look at this as a supplemental system that would supplement the MERV 13 filters in some of our, of our, say, older air handling units. This is just, I wanna call it icing on the cake. There, there are a number of other controls that we could put in place, but we looked at the eye wave. It has good, good track record, it's very efficient. More importantly, there, if we can obtain them as long as the unit that's sitting right behind. So next slide please. So in, in conclusion, summarize. The assessment identified that 51 of the school buildings meet the Ashray guidelines, the school ventilation filtration. We have four, and that's out of the 55, so that's a pretty good percentage. We would never, we were never expecting that number coming in to do this assessment. We thought it would be much different. But out of the 55 schools, 51 currently meet the Ashray guidelines put out by their consensus organization for ventilation and filtration. Do you think that's significant? One of the things that we do know with, with this increased operation is that it, we're gonna have increased operation of costs. We're gonna be changing filters more frequently. The units are gonna operate at a higher demand. They're gonna need more repairs, more maintenance, but that's a maintenance thing. The, the four schools that don't currently meet this standard, Brightwood, Homer, Kensington and Bridge Academy. In order to meet this standard, we are recommending that supplemental engineering controls be instituted. And, and we can do that on a portable basis. It doesn't need to be a fixed system such as the filtration system directly behind. Next slide please. Yes, this, this is, this will exceed the MERV 13 filtration rate. So in conclusion, summary also is that, you know, again, our 1950s to 1970s building, the majority of them, they've used the unit ventilators. Those all have MERV filters or all will. I mean, when we were doing our assessment, they were being installed as, and, and still are, especially because they're being special ordered. But that's one, one conclusion. And we need to operate with those unit ventilators with increased fresh air damper opening to bring in additional fresh air ventilation. Next slide please. This is basically just, again, complimenting because we have not seen a school with this many schools operating an offsite computerized monitoring system to handle the HVAC. This is, again, reemphasize, state of the art. It allows real time monitoring. You can open up that program and I can click to, or I can't, but John can, click to any, any HVAC zone and classroom and, and identify real early conditions in terms of whether they need, whether something needs repair, modification, operation. It's, again, it, it provides preventative maintenance for early detection problems. And, and lastly, in terms of conclusion, I can't over emphasize that this ventilation and filtration assessment, this is one element from an industrial hygiene point that, that is needed to be able to open up schools safely to prevent and minimize the transmission of COVID. But there are other policies, procedures, the, the wearing of masks, face protection, hand washing, disinfecting and clean. It, it's a multifaceted approach that needs to be put together so that, you know, we achieve that goal. Next slide please. So our recommendations again, you know, some of these are, majority of these are already been implemented. Adjust and modify the HVAC system to increase the, the, the volume of additional fresh air ventilation. You know, modify the operation. When you see the, the logic of HVAC management system, you can see that's very easy to do just by managing the computer operation and opening up those fresh air dampers. Also, what, what is recommended is that periodically we purge and flush classrooms. And what that means is that, you know, some of these older buildings, the 50s to the 70s, even though we achieved the Ashray standard, they still recommend, Ashray still recommends that maybe at the evening, maybe at the end of the day on classrooms, that windows be open. We allow large volumes of fresh air in to supplement the additional ventilation and filtration we have. We also recommend, and Ashray does as well, to adjust the carbon dioxide settings. So a lot of the units, as I mentioned, they operate under a CO2 carbon dioxide sensor. That's for the main control ventilation. Typically, we do not ever wanna see carbon dioxide levels exceeding 1,000 parts per million. In this particular case here, we're recommending that those set points be adjusted and reduced to, you know, 600 to 700 parts per million. To, to what that does at that point is as the carbon dioxide does accumulate from expiration of the occupants, that we will open those dampers, allow more air in to meet that Ashray standard. And lastly, next slide, last slide please. Again, replace the air filters, they're gonna need to be replaced more frequently. They do and will create an increased resistance across the face of it. So they're gonna need more frequent changes. And then we need to consider, and we're recommending, you know, either portable HEPA units like what's behind me or ultraviolet filtration units or other UV germicidal lamps or other supplemental controls, especially for the schools, the four schools, Homer, Brightwood, Kensington, Bridge Academy, that do not currently meet the Ashray standard. So with those supplemental controls, we believe we could meet this Ashray standard for those classrooms and allow those four buildings to open with the supplemental controls. And, and lastly is as our, you know, students have increased in various schools, we use certain areas that were initially never designed as classrooms. They may be basement units, they may be storerooms that have been converted to a spread room or to a reading room. If, if these, again, rooms do not have the level of ventilation, we would consider them to have the supplemental controls as well, such as the supplemental filtration and ventilation units in those spaces. And they're relatively limited or quite frankly, do not use them, go to another area, you know, for use. The cafeteria, for example, is not being used for, for, for food and distribution and eating. You could use that space because that is already meeting the Ashray standard. So with that, I don't know if there's questions. But I wanna, I wanna, Mr. Kirshner, Bob, thank you very much. I wanna thank everybody for your patience. This has been a very, very thorough, very, very thorough inspection and recommendations that have been done. Anyone down in chair?
So again, I wanna thank Mr. Kirshner, Bob, he's been very, very thorough in our school buildings and my municipal buildings. And I also want to thank Pat Sullivan and John Kerrigan and Commissioner Helen Colton here as superintendent of work. And to our financial team, CJ Plant, CFO and Pat Woltz on the school side. Bob, the comments he made really very pleasing. We've invested well over $600 million to build new schools and rehab new schools. And he was pleasantly surprised. The ESCO investment we made is really paying dividends here. And I made the commitment through TJ Plant on the city side that we're gonna do whatever we have to do to make sure when we're ready, facing it off, we're doing Commissioner Helen Colton here on the science, medicine, the medical and the public health aspect to get our students and our teachers, administration staff that safe and sound when it is proper and when we are ready to do that. So we made that commitment, some things have already been done. And again, that's a testament to Pat Sullivan and his team on it. But our financial wherewithal, stability and strength has been able, enabled us to be able to do this many years ahead of time and now unfortunately we're dealing with the fear of this COVID-19. So with that, I'm gonna have Pat Sullivan and John Kerrigan, the R2B2 here, show you how this operates. Superintendent Ward wanted to say, and then we're gonna take some questions. And I know Vice Chair Collins is gonna make a recommendation too, how we move, move forward. So I just wanna say a few words.
Sure.
I just wanna thank the mayor and the school committee. The school committee should be congratulated, the news that Bob gave us tonight, that our buildings are in good condition, are a direct result of the supporting our MSBA submissions. And I just wanna congratulate the mayor and TJ. They have provided over 40 million in city funds to upgrade our HVAC systems across the district. And we can now see that investment was very timely and necessary. I think we're ahead of the curve and of a lot of other school districts because of that investment. And that automated logic that Bob Kirshner was talking about, John does have that ability to go into the computer. We have three other facilities, a person assigned to that as well. They can do it from home, they can do it from the, the main office. And we would love to give the school committee a presentation, everyone wanna come over to Alex to see that. It would really give you more peace of mind that we can drill down to each individual classroom that has that automated logic to tweak the system. And it's that scientific and that really developed. And with that, I just wanna thank John Kerrigan, he's been a botson for the city and done great work. And he's gonna give you a brief description of this machine. Can everyone see this machine?
How long will it take to get those units, to put in those four buildings?
We're, we're getting that information as we speak. So we'll have some orders. And again, it looks very promising. The Bob Kirshner, because once he come out, it's sprinkles making this rule, everybody will run, follow us. But Bob's, you know, his fur does swoop all across the wing.
And we're not talking next week, we're talking a month, six weeks.
We, we're gonna know, we've, we've talked to Carrier, they're checking the inventory now and they're gonna give us good answers. There's two models, there's 1500 CFM and then the others, the 600 CFM. So they're gonna give us how fast they can get each of those units and we can give them a timeline. There's about a half a million electrical projects to do with these buildings to support this added thing. And TJ's been very supportive and he's looking at the different grants and state and federal monies that are available to support these necessary.
Wouldn't be online to say there's no chance you're having all of that done in two weeks.
No, 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 no.
Okay, all right. I just wanted the timeframe for the school.
We're probably looking early next year. And again, Vice Chair Collins will make the recommendations. I think everybody would be pleased about it as far as getting the certain wealth of public in an official vote on November 12th. So Pat, with that, and if you want anything to add before you finish.
Okay, John. John's gonna explain this. And we have this on, I guess, all they can hear, you can barely, you can barely hear it.
Thank you everyone. And I just wanna say thank you all for your fine words. Facilities management is happy to continue serving the Springfield, Springfield schools in any need there is. We give all the opportunities and work. So with that being said, we did go through a very odd investigations. We looked at just about every type of air purification or filtration unit that we can find on the market. We reached out all of our HVAC vendors, all, all of our vendors across the various state contracts, mask and so forth behind the vacation. And we received some notes from all of them, anyone interested in putting a product up for review. Among all those products, Carrier, this Carrier unit stood out. It sold for a number of reasons. Some of those reasons, one of the main reasons that stood out for me was that we did not wanna go back with what you would see as maybe a residential or very light end, light duty air purifier that you would see, you know, at, at, say Walmart possibly. We wanted to move forward with a very large, heavy commercial unit that has the capacity to, to, to make a measurable difference, a measurable effect in these classrooms and these educational spaces. Carrier is a very common. Carrier is a very common, very, very tried and true industry standard for HVAC and manufacturing. You'll see, you'll find Carrier equipment on many commercial rooms, commercial boiler rooms. So they have a very good solid certification and a very strong service relationship with our active vendor, vendor, very current vendors, city uses for other repairs. This specific unit, as Pat mentioned, comes in two sizes. There's a six hundred CFM unit, CFM being cubic feet per minute, it's a measure of airflow, and then a fifteen hundred cubic feet per minute. We've selected a combination of both of those for our school application, and we've made it, we've gone with different sized units due to the different sized spaces that we name in our in schools. The unit takes the air in from the bottom, filters it across multiple tiers of filtration. So unlike a unit that are air handled with maybe a single or dual level of filtration, you actually have multiple tiers of filtration through this unit, culminating with a HEPA filter. Those bottom tiers would be receiving the air first, so those tiers are replaceable and can be replaced by a combination of our control PM technicians or house custodian as needed as they become dirty in the school. So we can change them on a more regular basis to increase our ability to make a clean air. One of the nice features too is it's a dual mode unit, right? So one of its primary functions is a air scrubber, so it can pass air through the bottom over those filtration units and then exhaust it here at the top. One other possible configuration is a negative air machine. Negative air machines are used in construction projects to help clear air when there's heavy amounts of particulate or debris. But in this instance, we will be able to use flex ducting or plastic ducting, ducting out of an existing window or penetration through a perimeter wall, and then take that air from the classroom and exhaust it out. And quite a bit of air can be moved in that fashion, which would then be pulling in air from all the other active sources or passive sources in that building. And even a third option, which we choose to put there on that road, is to actually duct in a separate air supply to this unit and put it through the room. We're going to be looking at which configuration makes the most sense for the district as a whole, you know, based on the individual applications at each site. With that, I think, any, I'll start it on? Sure. So note that this is the six hundred CFM unit, the ones that will be going out to the schools will have a variable speed option, which means you can run it at a higher or lower speed, and that'll be good for whether you're in class or whether you're between classes to lower the decibel level. And we'll actually be taking a metered measuring, the decibels produced by this unit to make sure that we're staying within all applicable building and safety codes. And as you add a duct to the top, you will.
It's not, it's not very noisy. That's what I'll do, duct, we'll add it in here all day. So with that, we'll open up to our school committee members, any questions or comments you might have, Director Sullivan, Assistant Carrigan, Mr. Kirshner, his specialists, and then all the respective companies. So we'll open up any questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, discretion, and we're going to get, we're going to get this report too.
Oh, I have a quick question. It was a very good presentation. So my question is, I know some of the schools can have the required filters, and I know they say they change them frequently. How frequent would they be changed?
Quarterly. Four times a year, quarterly. That's what Mr. Sullivan. And to clarify that.
Okay, four times a year.
James, here, Mr. Sullivan. Just to clarify that, as a record, we would proceed quarterly. However, majority of the schools have sensors in the air handling units, the rooftop units, and even some of the units that measure their static pressure. So when static pressure rises or drops, it tells us about the condition of the filters. A lot of these units have alarms which go off and tell us regardless of quarterly, it could be, it could be two, three weeks after the change, we have alarm indicating that that filter has reached its saturation and needs to be changed. Following that, you know, the facility goes out because the facilities have backup changes on site year round, we'll go out and change them, or if they need assistance, we'll send out a control technician from the facilities department to do so.
Okay, all right, thank you. But even if you weren't there, they would have some available that staff or maintenance department could change them?
Director Sullivan indicated, yes, they would, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I have some, Mr. Mayor. So on one of the slides, I believe it was the one, the conclusion slide, one of the bottom bullets talked about the four schools without the mechanical ventilation. Are those four schools the Brightwood, Homer, Kensington, Bridge Academy?
Yeah.
So would those, are those the schools that would get this machine, or those would be schools that would have to utilize the windows?
No, they, they, they're, 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 we get the new, we get the work. We're not going to want the box fields, but that's, we're going to go, we're going to go better than what Desi's recommended. They're going to get the Carrier option, and of course, the Homer, Brightwood, we'll have a, you know, we'll have a new school that's a couple of years, but Bob, I hope you want to keep on that when this works? Yeah, no, exactly. We plan and we propose to use the Carrier unit in all of those classrooms for those four schools. Desi, in some of their earlier recommendations were to put a box fan in a window and try to bring in fresh air, and put a filter, kind of duct tape a filter, was kind of a, an impromptu method of trying to achieve that. We looked at that, we do not feel comfortable with that, and that's why we looked at not only, as John mentioned, not only those, you know, Walmart style air purifiers, which some do have HEPA filtration, but we needed something larger, something that would carry a larger cubic feet per minute of filtration in air passing through. So for those four schools, in order to meet that ASHRAE standard, we are recommending a large capacity, which you see behind.
Thank you. So in addition to reviewing or studying the schools, did we study any of the other facilities where we have employees, so like PACE, the PD Center, Central Office? Did we do, did we study any of those facilities or just our school?
They look all awesome, part of that, all. That's, yeah, that started with fifty-five, that the PACE, for example, the Culinary Center, those were included in the assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question. So the question that I have is, are there other districts who have successfully implemented this product that are hybrid now? And can you share with us, you know, maybe even some of those best practices, and if that is something that has occurred already?
To the best of our knowledge, other districts went by the Desi standards, they haven't gone to the ASHRAE standard. The other district that's trying to achieve that is Worcester, and they have.
Okay. And then I, my secondary question is, what is the approximate cost for the increase of maintenance? And where is that funding coming from to cover those additional costs?
I made, I have made the commitment, TJ Plant, city side, we're going to do what we have to do. So commitments already been made, above and beyond, and of course, we're very closely with Pat Roach and Superintendent Ward on the school side. We made the physical plant commitment, I made it on the city side, and CFO TJ Plant, because of our financial management, we can back it up, we're going to do whatever we have to do, working with Commissioner Helen Colton Harris, that when the time is ready, and the time is right, based on public health, science and medical, that we'll be ready to go, that it's safe and sound for our students, administration and staff. So we made that commitment and was a formal presentation, we'll have a figure on it, but it's going to cost, it's going to cost a number of dollars, but it's the right thing to do. I was happy that Mr. Kirshner indicated that he was pleasantly surprised compared to other systems they do across the wing, and that the firework we've done has positioned us well, but we want to go above and beyond the Desi standard. So we're committed to doing it, and we're going to do it.
Short answer, you know, it's not coming out of the school committee.
Can I?
I know it's, it's coming out of my, my, but it's the right thing to do.
But can I ask, can I ask a follow up to that? I mean, thank you, Mayor, but why, why would it fall on the city side? And I think that's important for Latonia and I to know, especially in our roles at MASC. Is it a matter of that we don't have the funding? Is it a matter of us needing to advocate that that is a challenge that districts like ourselves are facing, and so we now have to depend on our municipality to help with budgeting?
Physical plant has always really been on the city side, again, our financial stability and strength, and also working with the city council, because many times it's eighty percent or even more, so I appreciate the city council's effort. What we're going to do though, is that, besides our financial stability and strength, it's still challenging time, the COVID money that comes in, the, you know, the CARES money, hopefully another stimulus is coming from the federal side. We try, I give a deficit figure of what we spent every Monday when we do our COVID-19 update in the hospitals, and we're trying, TJ's working very, very hard to offset on grants and the money that's coming in. So we're going to do the same strategy we did dealing with the natural man-made disasters we faced a number of years ago to recoup reimbursement of that money. But the physical plant, again, that, physical plant comes on the city side, we're building schools, city side, MSBA, the ESCO programs that we're doing, that's always on the city side, the majority of the money, school side obviously goes to the educational aspect.
Mayor, I'm here if you need me to add any comment or context.
Now TJ, I just gave a thirty thousand.
Yeah.
CFO Plant, could you?
Sure. So the biggest thing is that the city got thirteen point five million dollar in two allocations from the Federal CARES Act passed through the state. And those thirteen point five million dollars need to be spent by December thirtieth, and comes with a lot of strings attached that makes it a challenge for us to spend it. And they give us a lot of flexibility on spending it on behalf of the schools, and making sure that the schools have the facilities and the needs that they, that they have. So we've been able to go to FEMA for about a million dollars reimbursing, reimbursement for COVID expenses. We're going to FEMA for the public safety stuff, using CARES money for the school facilities and the municipal buildings as a very strategic way to get this done. So a majority of what's going to get done is going to be federal and or state dollars. The city will contribute to the non, the funds that are not being able, we're not able to reimburse for as part of the application. As you may have seen, the state has, is working on balancing their FY twenty-one budget, or excuse me, FY twenty-one budget, and they actually have used, they're planning on using any unspent COVID funds to help them balance. We have zero intention on letting them get the money back, so we'd much rather invest in what Pat and John and everyone else in the superintendent have put forward as the plan. We don't know a final dollar figure yet, but we know we're in the range where we're able to charge most of this to grants. As far as the operational stuff, I'll be working with John, Pat Sullivan and Pat Roach to figure out just exactly what that is. I did authorize John today to get a quote or get us set up for having a year's worth of filters, just to have them in, so all it is, is just changing them out rather than having to order them. That's how strategic we're being in our purchasing, and we have a team that meets every two weeks now. Today was the first time to make sure that we're doing everything we need to do for both the city and the schools, and to make sure that our kids can get back to school safely.
Thank you, TJ. And again, we're hoping, you know, they gave us a deadline. I understand on the United States Senate for some senators have put in and also deal with Chairman Neo, Congressman Neo, Richard again today, to see if they can give us some extension time, because this is going to go into 2021. We're going to err on the side of caution that this money has to be spent before the end of the calendar year, and we wanted to go to the most important strategic aspects of this money, and that's why we're allocating this to move as quickly as possible. We're already doing the reach out on the Carrier systems and other things too, with our suppliers on that. But it'll put us in good shape when we're ready to get back into our school, when we're ready.
So Mrs. Hurst, Mrs. Nayler, putting your MASC hat on, because I heard the other half of that question clearly. We are lucky in Springfield where we've got a city side and a school side that works together, works at the envy of the system, but for the people that you're dealing with in the MASC adult county utopia that we have, if you look at chapter seventy-one, routine maintenance is under the school committee. Doing upgrading to meet this COVID, which should fall outside of routine maintenance and therefore fall on the municipal government side rather than the school side. So if you go, if you tell your colleagues, look at seventy-one, they should get their answer there.
No, that's helpful.
The community is funded on the city side. But that was a very good question, Mr. Hurst, on that. But we're going to, again, we did it with, we're going Commissioner Helen Colton Harris and Chief Officer Austin Sheehan in Connecticut, we had to deal with the homeless situation. We moved on that a month ahead of time, and I want to thank this Hurst and President Cook at stick, who allowed us to stage there with the state of the art triage we put there, and that paid dividends since gone. So again, same strategy we use with other past natural man-made disasters, we have three tornadoes going on, but we're going to do what's right to make sure our kids are, and the students and administration family are safe and sound. Please, any other questions and comments?
I have a clarification question. The vote as to whether or not, or what we're going to do as far as moving forward with remaining online or going hybrid is on November twelfth, is that what I heard?
Well, Miss Nayler, we're going to take your advice, what we did before, we had a talk, I'm going to let Vice Chair, we just, Vice Chair Collins is going to make a motion or is going to.
Clearly, we are getting to the point where we need to have, make that decision, and so parents know how to plan going forward. I made a proposal to the mayor earlier that on the tenth of November, we hold another public town hall, like we did before, and that we actually schedule a move on the twelfth of November regularly, using this information that we've got, using a good report from Helen Colton on the status of the, of us, and then, and put all that out in the town hall, and then on the twelfth, we will take all that information and make our decision. That was part of my pointed question when I asked, when did we think these units would be available? There's certainly, the market period ends at thirteenth, they're not going to be ready on the fourteenth of November. That's why I asked that question, so that would help us frame our minds.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question, Chris? And this may require, why, it would, I, of course, it would require some insight from the superintendent. Well, when we were having some conversation, when we were having the conversations about what to do about school in the late summer, I remember us having a conversation about our, our special education children, right? And I remember, and I think Attorney Phelps might be on the line, where we had asked about that, and we were told that we couldn't do that because there was some legality around treating different popul, or treating populations differently from one another. Well, when you're looking at the paper or you're reading about what's happening in districts all across the state, you're hearing, and even some neighboring districts, that they have brought back high needs populations, some have even brought back vocational schools, they've brought back English language learners. Can we also get some clarification about how those districts have been able to differentiate populations and bring them back?
I'd be glad to give some clarifications on that, because I've been watching what's going on in the state. Most places have done a phasing approach where they bring back certain populations. Some districts started with only sped, some started with sped, ELL, and certain perhaps entry point grades like K, six and nine. So I would suggest when we're talking about coming back, we look at a phased in approach that makes the most sense, and that's what we were actually thinking about this summer, that when we come back, we use some kind of phasing and system. And those high need students would be our highest priority when we come in to serve more often. So that I'd absolutely, when we're ready to return safely, recommend that we consider a phased in approach. We bring some recommendations forward that have been tried in other districts, but that makes the most sense.
We'd also have, we'd also have to look at the transportation model. I know Desi hasn't recommended it, but I think the school committee agrees that, you know, the temperature taken might have to be done before you get on that bus at that point in time. The other thing, and Commissioner Helen Colton Harris, my or our Dr. Anthony Fox, he's done a tremendous job, the, the, the numbers continue to increase, they continue to increase. And the commissioner will know that, you know, we are seeing a younger demographic that is being affected, and some have been that, but some have been really young. So anything we do, obviously with the okay of the school committee, is going to be based on that public health, uh, uh, medical and, and sciences. But we want to make sure we're prepared. Um, and then the search which you said about when it, if, when we are prepared, phasing it in. But we're going to go, we're going to go above and beyond what Desi recommends on it. Any other questions or comments? And again, the, Miss, uh, Miss Naylor, you had mentioned it before we did the town, we're going to do that top, the town hall. And we might not have a full presentation, but Commissioner Helen Colton Harris will be here, Mr. Kirsten, just to do a little brief of the reasoning why we're going to do this or not do that. And then we'll do our meetings on the twelfth. We'll do an official vote as Vice Chair Collins indicates to let our parents and children know how we're going to go into the second, uh, bargaining period at that point. But please, any questions or comments you might have, we wanted to, it's very thorough and we wanted to put this, uh, out. We're taking this very, very seriously, uh, like we, hey, listen, we'd like to get our kids already back to a regular normalcy back in. But we want to make sure when the time is ready, it's done properly.
I'm sorry, Peter.
Just bill it on it.
Just wanted to add as part of this conversation for the November tenth and the twelfth is the sports, um, conversation. I know that we've had some, uh, situations that have occurred and, and I think having more, um, information on that as to how we should proceed should also be a part of that conversation. I think that the families really, a lot of them are upset because they really don't know what's going on. But once we do talk to our constituents and their understanding of why we're, we've done certain things. But I think that getting some clarification out to folks as to how we're going to proceed and move forward with, um, extracurricular activities and sports would be also something.
That's a great suggestion. We actually have asked Helen to give you a brief presentation on that too.
Yes, and, uh, I know A D Early's on the line, but that is a key question, how we proceed or not proceed or a pause or how we react.
Look at that. We wanted to talk to you tonight about that, but we wanted to get through this piece first, but that's a great, uh, great point. So we want to talk about the fall pause. And then, uh, there isn't any Desi guidance yet on the winter recommendations, but I think there'll be some forthcoming. Uh, but, uh, certainly we want to talk about the fall pause and what we know about the winter. So we'll, we'll do that with you tonight.
Thank you.
Before I go to Attorney Murphy, and again, if the numbers continue to escalate statewide, you know, there could be an idiot coming from Governor Baker too, which would change the whole applications where schools and businesses, you name it. I mean, we're, we're holding tight right now, but the numbers have, um, increased. And we're going to continue our mitigating, mitigation strategy. Attorney Murphy, I'm sorry, Pete.
Oh, no, thank, thank you very much, Mayor. Just, uh, just briefly, I, I do, I want to echo what, uh, Ms. Naylor had said about the cost of, of the, and we appreciate you, you, uh, bearing the burden of those costs, at least initially, but, and, and thank you for Mr. Plant, uh, to, to utilize that grant money. But also with respect to what Ms. Hurst said, I, you know, my biggest concern, I think, is our special education children. You know, they really haven't been in school since March. And, and, you know, I, I just think, uh, I'm very concerned about the, the way that, that, uh, they're not, they're, they're not getting the, the attention, they're not getting the, the instruction that, you know, that they, that they need and our English language learners as well. So I would just, the faster that we can get that moving, um, I think that's important for us to look at.
No, we're looking at it. We're giving them full remote program right now, a high quality full remote program. So we, we are addressing their needs and we have remote plans for every one of those students. We're giving them a quality remote program. But our goal will, when we return, to take that population in as one of our first populations. Our attorney said, don't take only special ed children first, make sure they're part of the group if it's a patient approach. And we'll follow that approach and we'll give a recommendation to you at the appropriate time. But most of the urban centers that have tried to return have also get a pause and send the kids back home again. We also want to remember that most of those students, higher students, highly likely that have more pre-existing conditions. So we want to make sure we take care of these air, air ventilation systems before we bring them back in. When we actually called the parents of our high needs bed group, over fifty percent of them i- in the, uh, early fall did not want the kids to return at that time, didn't feel it was safe. So we're trying to take a thoughtful approach to this, but that would be a group we prioritize and we bring them back in. But we're delivering a high quality program to them right now. Ms. Hurst?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I clarify the reason for my question. I'm in no way advocating that we bring them back unless it's appropriate and unless it's safe, right? I still stand by the decision that we needed to be remote and quite honestly, you know, what I have read in the news over the last several days and, and what has just popped up on the phone as we are in this meeting regarding our current levels, I completely understand to, the need to, to remain remote. You know, to ensure everyone's safety so that we can contribute to helping stop the spread. My question was more so, you know, could we get some clarification about how that could happen in other districts and not necessarily ours? Because when we asked the question in July or August, we were told we just couldn't do it. And now we've seen that other districts have done it.
So we were advised, yeah, we were advised by our attorney at that time not to isolate only special education and bring them in. Should there be a problem, we have huge litigation issues to deal with. So we were told not only to do sped, but then you, you could, we were just advised by our attorney that that wouldn't be wise. And I would recommend that approach. I would recommend a phased in approach like other systems have done. Now, some have done sped only, but with sped, with some of our other groups, maybe bulk, the entry grades, it makes a lot more sense. But again, like you said, when we're ready and when it's safe for those students.
I'm anticipating that this cycle of town hall decision is going to be repetitive. I, I would think that once all of this equipment is installed, we'll be doing it again. Cause that, then we've addressed that part of the standard and then we've got to start talking to the rest of it about getting kids in. So I think we're going to see at least for more of these. And we're, I, I think it's proofed out. It's good for our parents and our community. And it worked, I think we should repeat it and keep the people as informed as they can.
Yeah. That was a real good source of input for us and to get the community involved. So I'm looking forward to that.
Any other qu- questions or comments, Ms. Naylor?
I have, I have one more comment. Well, it's two in one sentence. So the, the first one is about the MCAS preparation. So I do see that there have, um, been some conversations around Commissioner Riley expecting that MCAS will be as usual, um, this year. And so I'm concerned about what that means as far as online or hybrid learning and our kids being prepared for MCAS. Um, so I would love for us to talk a little bit about that in future. Um, and then also the repercussions of what each scenario may be. For example, uh, if we decide to go hybrid, what does the HR situation look like as far as teachers who are requesting to retire or who are adamant that they're not going to return, which therefore could end up being a situation where we have an increase in substitute teachers because now the teachers aren't coming back or what have you. Um, and any other scenarios maybe that we're seeing in other districts that are a result of us making certain decisions, just so we can be aware of what we're prepared for. I don't think that it's going to detour specifically for making a decision if it's safe. But I do think it's important for us to be prepared as to whatever the outcome may be, should we make certain decisions.
So let me take them one at a time. Those are great questions. I attended a meeting yesterday with Lydia, uh, with Commissioner Riley. And the MCAS issue came up and, uh, as response to the question, the superintendent's was that at this time, based on a ruling from, that's he boasts, the educational secretary, that MCAS has to be given. So that's where it sits at this time, according to the federal government. He said he doesn't, he's not sure how it's going to go. One option would be that you order everyone back into school to take MCAS. Another option would be that for systems that have warned that possibly some could be done on, you know, remotely, uh, because the education is done remotely. He didn't give us any answer on that. He just said that that's the plan right now. In order to deter from that plan, we have to go to the legislature like last year. I personally think the legislature would be wide open to that discussion as they were last year. Because what sense does it make to give MCAS in this scenario right now? It just doesn't make any sense. The instructional time lost given the MCAS. And what are you going to get out of it? You're going to find that, yes, there was a gap in learning due to all of what's gone on with this pandemic. So I think that's a point we don't have an answer for you on yet, but I think it's a debate point and we're not sure how it's going to go. But, uh, we'll make sure that we stay on it and I keep you abreast of, of the discussion. But I think there'll be a healthy discussion on that. And I think the legislature will be wide open to hearing, not canceling MCAS because I think MCAS is necessary for accountability. I think it has helped improve schools. But at this juncture, what purpose does it have this year? And I think that's a healthy discussion. That's going to occur in the Commonwealth. I'm not sure how it's going to come out. But it's not a foregone conclusion that it will be going. He's just saying they're planning it right now. And as a district, we'll be planning to make sure we're ready to do what we need to do for our kids so that we'll execute when the decision is finally made. But I think there'll be a lot more conversation statewide before anything, uh, goes forward on that. So we'll, we'll keep you abreast as, as to how that breaks out. A second part of the question, I'm sorry, Latonia was on, uh, what'd you have for the second part?
Teachers, teachers.
Oh, the teachers, the HR. We'll, we'll get you that HR information. There's no question. That should we return, there'll be teachers who have pre-existing conditions and or childcare issues that we wouldn't have available if we were to go hybrid. And that'll be part of the discussion and we'll give you the data we have today and what comes in. I think, uh, we probably would have gotten more requests should we have made a hybrid decision earlier. But we've gotten right now, so I don't think we have all the information. We do have some information. And I think it's a factor to be considered as the decision is made.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing, I'd like to bring up, okay.
Mine is just a suggestion. It's just a suggestion. My suggestion and to the gentleman who did the presentation. I mean, I know that that was a ton of work. It was very good. I agree with Mrs. Gresham. But at the town hall, is it possible to just ensure?
Yes.
Be concise and just.
Do a very abbreviated version of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Who has a school committee that have a detailed understanding will give a very abbreviated presentation, just so they can feel, what's the suggestion?
Mr. Kirsten will open up with, that concludes my remarks. But we wanted to make sure it was very detailed and thorough for the school committee members, but Mr. Kirsten will do that. I wanted to bring up Commissioner Helen Colton Harris to make a, a, a presentation, uh, piggybacking on this. And that, at that point in time, there's no more questions. I can let Helen and Bob and Pat and John go home. Commissioner Colton Harris, if you have questions, no problems, but they're here. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks.
Well, actually, this presentation is actually going to be, uh, from me extremely brief. What has occurred is I was contacted in my office about sports and resuming sports on for Springfield Public Schools. And we had a conversation, as all of you know, we are in a surge right now as far as coronavirus is concerned. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts today, there were one thousand two hundred and forty-three cases that were reported. This is the fourth day that we have had over one thousand cases in the Commonwealth. I'll give you that information so as we begin this discussion about resuming sports, that you understand where we are as a Commonwealth. The city of Springfield, at this point, we had sixty-one cases today alone. We are in a surge. We are looking at clusters in many places. That's the foundational information that I think is very important as we start to, um, have the discussion about, uh, resuming sports. So I had a conversation today, uh, last week, I should say, our cases were two hundred and thirty-five cases last week. This week already, we are at a hundred and sixty-nine. So we are on pace to do more cases this week, um, than we did last week. And so we know that, um, the city has community spread as far as this virus is concerned. It is in the community. These cases are not like in the beginning when they were at the long-term care facilities. These cases are in households. These cases are in younger individuals. And so what we know is that the majority of the cases, forty percent of the cases that we are seeing last week were under the age of twenty. I tell you that because we, we are getting to starting to think about school-aged children. So we had a Zoom call today and on that call was your assistant superintendent, Lydia Martinez. Um, Jeannie Clancy was on that call, Mr. Early was on that call. Uh, my staff and Mr. Garb was on that call and I was on that call. And we did discuss sports in the city of Springfield and resuming. After a long conversation, and I'm going to ask Jeannie and Lydia, uh, to jump in because they were a part of the decision-making process. If I heard Mr. Early correctly, he said that sports were, um, scheduled to end on November twentieth. So if we resume sports, we would do it for three to four weeks. And then we would pause or end that season and then move into the winter sports. Uh, so we can talk about that in a second. But the recommendation, I think, is that, um, we, uh, felt comfortable that we could potentially resume sports for our children, uh, who are in sports program. And I'll tell you, I mean, everyone talked about our children needing exercise, needing to get out, needing to be active. We would do that under a couple of circumstances. One is that all three hundred student athletes were tested prior to resuming. So everybody would need to be tested. I have reached out to our staff, spread partners and waiting to hear back. I think one of them, Fallon, may be able to come to the school, do all three hundred students. We get the test back in a couple of, um, days. Without having everyone tested, it would not be our recommendation that we resume, um, sports. And so I'm going to stop there because you have amazing individuals who you work with, uh, in Springfield Public Schools. Jeannie Clancy, your lead, your lead nurse, as well as Lydia Martinez, uh, assistant superintendent. So why don't I stop? Because they were both on the call and let's get their perspective around the recommendation. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Commissioner Colton Harris. Assistant Superintendent Martinez or Nurse Clancy?
She's muted.
Lydia, you're muted.
You're muted.
My apologies. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, so yes, the conversation was, was very intense today because we really do want to get the students out, but we want to do that in a very safe manner. And so because the fall sports end on November twentieth, we have approximately the three weeks. And because it is the recommendation of the commissioner as well as Jeannie, um, and in consultation with myself and Duane and Ann, um, we are trying to get them tested in time to do that. The good news is that if we don't get them tested on time and if we cannot resume sports at this time, and, um, A D Early will talk about this, is we do have that for season where the kids can make up some of those games during that timeframe. So it won't be games lost for our children, um, because as everybody on this call knows, it's, it's, they're our number one that we're really, really concerned and worried about. And so we're waiting to see if we can get that testing done and if there is a cost. Um, with the first person that we spoke to today, it was going to be approximately about twenty-two thousand dollars um, to get every child tested quickly, um, so that they can resume sports at this time. But I'll turn it over to Jeannie and then over to, um, Duane Early. Jeannie?
Thank you, Lydia. So I agree that the safest way to return to sports is to have all students tested. I also recommended before we opened back up that we review. that we review all the mitigating strategies that we had implemented since there's been a break in practicing. It'd be really important besides testing that everybody is taught how to stay safe and the checking-in process, the wearing mask and the social distancing. And if we can accomplish all that in time, in order to make the season worthwhile, I agree we should open.
AD Early?
Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Lydia and Jeannie. I also concur. I do agree if we can get the children tested in a timely fashion and get them back on to the playing field. I think that would give some closure to our student athletes and also provide them an opportunity to finish something that they have started. Again, I think, again, I think that if we get back in a safe manner, which we were utilizing all the protocols earlier in the season before we had to shut down, I think it's something feasible that we could get done by the 20th.
Thank you, AD Early. Commissioner Carlton-Harris?
So we'll take any questions that you have. I have reached out to the state. They have made a vendor available to me that I will propose to tomorrow. If they can do this, then they will set up as soon as Monday to get this done. We talked about being set up at Central. So because that appeared to be, from what I heard, a sort of central location, if you will. So we would set up there. The testing apparatus would come there. We would schedule the students, but we can do 300 in one day. And we would get those results back within 24 hours. So that then by Wednesday, hopefully, we will have the test of all of the students and then feel that some measure of safety as far as the resuming sports are concerned. So that's our strategy at this point. And all of us who were on that call would be happy to answer any questions.
School committee members, any questions, Ms. Hirsch?
Thank you, team Commissioner Jeannie, Lydia, Duane. So how many, when does the fall season end?
November 20th.
And so how many times would we test the students? Once or would we do it weekly, bi-weekly?
The immediate goal is to test them once. And that's because the season ends, probably would be ending within the next couple of weeks. I mean, by the time we get the students back to practice, it would probably be testing them once. And we certainly can test them after the season. But we think once would probably be optimal based on the length of the season, which is going to be only two and a half weeks by the time we start, actually, I think.
But I guess my, I guess, so what happens if they test on Wednesday but get exposed next Tuesday?
Well, that certainly is a concern for all of us. I mean, if you think about it, it is students and definitely you have some concern. You will recall that the one soccer player who tested positive, we tested the rest of the team and they were all negative. And so you're absolutely right. There's nothing that prevents any of us as we sit here from having a negative test today and two days later testing positive. And so that is a risk we take as far as this virus is concerned. And so there is the potential. But it would be if all of those students test negative, we know going into the season that they are virus-free. So that would be the goal, which you're absolutely right. There are no guarantees for any of us and I'll be clear about that. As far as contracting the virus is concerned, we know that we shed the virus at least 48 hours potentially prior to. Prior to, so someone could shed the virus two days ahead of time and then test positive and have exposed other individuals prior to. So it is a concern and I appreciate your asking the question, but there is no guarantee.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Collins?
Our teams are not playing just Springfield teams, no. Do we know what other cities, are they going to take similar steps? Do you think, are they going to test their students, I mean, their athletes?
It's my understanding that, and Mr. Early helped me with this, but it was my understanding there was only one other team that we might play and that was a team from Chickasha. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner. So the way the schedule was set up is that we're playing teams within the district for the most part, except for Hampden Charter, which is in Chickasha. And they've agreed to compete should we resume.
The other point too is, Mr. Carlton-Harris, as we put it forth constantly, especially in our Monday briefings, is the public health education and the mitigation, what we're asking everybody to continue to do. So that would be tied in with the students and their families too. And hopefully all to test negative. And that you want to stay negative and these are the procedures you need to follow. So we're going to try our best to get sports going again, but we want to be safe and sound. If you're going to, I hope I'm wrong, but if you get a high percentage that tests positive, I mean, most important thing is the student and family's health. So we'll see.
Could I ask, Duane, could you clarify, when the charter schools said they've agreed to participate, did they also mean they agreed to test?
They did not state any of that, Mr. Collins. They did say they would agree to participate, but they did not mention anything about the testing their individual student athlete.
Well, that's what they would be willing.
They play us, but they will test their kids.
Oh, I misunderstood. I thought they said one was certain.
That gives me a little pause. I don't know about other committee members. If you've got a team that wants to compete against ours, but doesn't test their kids and Chickasha is high. What, I don't know, what does everybody feel about that? To me, it gives me a little pause.
Well, I would agree with you, Chris, for sure. And I think the other question that I have is, are we also testing coaches? Yes.
Yes, every, yeah. We should have said that, but yes, we are. I'm sorry, we shouldn't have did that.
And if they're only playing against Hampden Charter, is it, and if they don't agree to test their students for purposes of allowing them to finish their season, continue with their health and wellness, can they play or scrimmage amongst each other?
If you put a policy out that says that we will not play Chickasha unless their students are tested because our students are going to be tested, then they should not be a part of the rotation, period. I think that that should be the, that should be the standard that we use. Because we do not want our students to have infection from another city, town or team. So that's what I would say as far as Chickasha is concerned. Should we move forward with the recommendation?
I think, again, that's why I call it my archetypal philosophy that we see across the state, especially in Haffington, where a lot of it is regional play.
Yeah.
And I think I see AD Early shaking his head too. That's where a lot of the infections were occurring. And we were ahead of the curve with Mr. Helen Carlton-Harris. We shut down our SC arena two weeks ago. And then the state had to order after the fact, close out because they're matriculating with our outside team. So I think that's solid, it's no disrespect to any other area, but I think that's solid strategy there. We're testing our kids and our kids are okay. And then we're, well, okay, you're going to go play over here and they have somebody that had tested positive. Then that spread comes back over here. So I think that's a sound strategy there. Say, if you're not going to test, we're going to have to play more of an internal or inter-city type schedule. Am I correct, AD Early?
Yes, Mayor, we would be capable of doing that because the city, the city has multiple number of high schools where we could all, where we could do internal games to finish it off.
Vice Chair Collins put it forth, I don't know, but yeah. See what the school committee says, those are what we can take when we get it officially on the agenda. But I have to confirm, Mr. Carlton-Harris.
Obviously, you're going to get this before we have a chance to take. I'll implement this based on appeal from the school committee if you'd like.
As a matter of fact, under the, with the Health Department or the Department of Public Health here in the city on it, with this pandemic, whether it has enormous powers, which transferred to help me out here too. So we're in the midst of a pandemic. And if this is what the, our health commissioner is recommending, I believe maybe we can do something as far as.
Oh, yeah. It was only a pause.
Yeah.
So if the school committee feels this is, as I do, this is a reasonable precaution to get our kids back. If it's willing, the school committee will do the tests and get them back to finish the season.
Attorney Phelps, I don't know if you can clarify that, but we are under emergency powers right now.
Yes, yes.
I mean, Helen and I are still operating under emergency powers of public health.
That's right. The Public Health Commissioner has the ability to order whether things proceed or not to proceed. And with regards to the pause for sports, it was based upon the recommendation among the Commissioner, Jeannie Clancy, the Superintendent. And it was an administrative decision. It did not require a school committee vote, nor would it require the school committee vote to resume play. It's again, based upon the recommendation of the Public Health Commissioner.
Attorney Phelps, is it okay, under this emergency premise we're working on, is it okay that after we test, if we will not play anyone, the superintendent could recommend through the emergency public health powers, Mr. Carlton-Harris, we will not play any team that is not testing?
You can. My question, I guess, to the athletic director would be, is there any guidance from the MIAA? Mike, the last time I was on a call with you regarding the MIAA, it was pretty clear that they have kind of put their hands up and delegated decision-making to the local municipality. But if there's no jeopardy in that regard for kids, you know, and particularly because it's the Public Health Commissioner who makes the recommendations that we would follow.
AD Early, you really, there's been no direct directives from the MIAA, right? They really kicked it back on our quarter on field, like, correct?
Yes, Attorney Phelps is correct. The MIAA has made it so that it's mostly a local decision.
Okay, well then, if everybody, if we want to hear, if everybody's in agreement, I would take the recommendation.
Mayor, could I, could I?
Attorney Murphy, can I go to?
So first of all, I totally in support of testing. I think that's a great idea and thank you, Ms. Carlton-Harris and Jeannie and Mr. Early. But I guess some parents who have children that are participating in sports might ask the question. So we have hundreds of kids that were participating, right? We had football practice, we had soccer, we had golf and cross-country, right? So we had many, many kids participating. We have one child, as far as I, or young person, as far as I know, that tested positive. And that person played soccer. So, but all of sports were canceled. Even though, you know, for example, cross-country practices at Forest Park and is not anywhere near necessarily soccer players. So for the parents and the folks out there who, you know, are asking why, why was everything canceled? Because one person tested positive in a different sport at a different school? Can we explain that to those parents that are upset about the fact that their kids are not participating in sports anymore? And totally in support of testing in this plan. I just, I just think that we should get that out there.
Well, I certainly understand the confusion and the concern. At the time we made the decision, we did not know the penetration of the virus as far as the soccer team was concerned at that point. And so we knew we had to shut the soccer team practice down and have those individuals tested. So the decision was really made out of an abundance of caution. We knew, or at least I knew and I'm sure, that the cases in age were getting younger and younger and younger. And we did not know how many individuals. And quite frankly, we still don't know because we did not test. The only individuals that got tested were the soccer players. And that's why we're recommending the entire sports regiment be tested so that we can be assured that there are no other positives anyplace else in the student athletes. But your question and your question and the parent's question is actually a good one. I mean, I would say that we did it out of an abundance of caution. We did not know the rate of the penetration of the virus in our students and we wanted to make sure that everybody was safe. So it was a, you know, it was a decision that was made that took into account several factors. And we're still dealing with some of those factors right now. And that's why I started with the data with you so that you had some understanding that the cases were getting younger and younger.
And Commissioner, if I recall, the decision-making path that was taken for that decision to pause sports was also based upon the fact that Springfield had just entered the red zone again.
Into the red zone, exactly.
And so that was a big consideration that it entered the red zone. We had a positive on the soccer player out of an abundance of caution. And I think appropriately so, it was paused.
You were on that call and I thank you for reminding me of that because you're absolutely right. That was part of our discussion when we made that decision. So thank you for bringing that up.
Ms. Hirsch?
I have a question for AD Early. Have we heard, I mean, I know that we've gotten a couple, or at least I have gotten a couple of emails from parents regarding sports. But I wondered if AD Early or anybody in the district, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, have you heard from any parents? And do you anticipate any potential pushback to having their children or students tested?
So from what I've heard from some parents that I have heard of, they were a little upset the fact that their child played a particular sport that was nowhere near soccer and they were wondering why, like the commissioner said, their sport got paused as well. And I just reassured them that it was over an abundance of caution. We had just entered the red. We had one positive test. The commissioner said we didn't know how far it penetrated. So we thought out of an abundance of caution, it was the right thing to do to pause for two weeks.
But as any parent said, you know, I don't want to have my child tested or we've not even floated that idea because that's just coming up now.
That's just coming up now, so we haven't, we haven't put that out there, or it's out there now.
Ms. Hirsch, we did have the students that were on the soccer team that were exposed to get tested and we got no pushback from parents. And some actually did get their children tested and reported the results. They were all negative to us.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And it would just be a continued, if they want to continue playing, it would be a condition of continuing. So everyone is safe.
And Mayor, I would say the intuition was correct because the data now shows that we have significant community spread. So the intuition to make that decision, which wasn't an easy one. No, in hindsight, is now backed up by current data about community spread, which unfortunately, I believe is going to continue to grow as we approach Thanksgiving.
We've been very, very grateful for the commissioner's support and great leadership. If there's no other questions, I'd like to be able to, if there's no other questions, to let Mr. Carlton-Harris, Mr. Philman and John Kerrigan and Bob, who should be able to read.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment, not a question. I think it's important, especially since we have so many people viewing us tonight, that folks understand that we get a lot of information, not just what happens in our district, but also neighboring districts. As Denise said, she and I both are very involved with the Mass Association of School Committees. You all are very involved as well in talking to not just those in our city, but also our neighboring towns. And we did have a town that had students who played golf that were infected with COVID. And so golf seems to be something that nobody should get sick. There's no physical interaction, but yet there were a number of students on that team that received positive tests. So I think that folks need to understand we're not naive. That we're not just shooting in the dark, in a way of speaking, but we're really trying to make very strategic decisions. And we're trying to make sure that we are as much as possible, things that we're knowledgeable of, making the decisions that make the most sense. And just because we don't have all the information out to the public doesn't mean that we are not making decisions that are sensible and logical. So I just wanted to say that and to commend Assistant Superintendent AD Early and all of those that are working with them and the leadership because it is a mammoth of a job. And really, we don't want to see an outbreak of folks getting sick and then saying, well, we should have made better choices. So we're trying to be as careful as we can and as sensible as we can. and basing things on science as much as possible, because we don't want to see our kids sick, and we don't want to see their families sick because of any decision we made, because we weren't thoroughly, weren't thorough in making those decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any other questions?
Yes.
Assistant Lieutenant Martinez?
I didn't want the Commissioner to leave, because we wanted to just kind of bring you up to speed on what we know about winter sports before she left. And the, and the Commissioner brought up a really good point when we were meeting today with the governor's ordinance of the sports that we usually play in the winter, which are basketball, wrestling, and swimming. And so Commissioner, if you don't mind giving us that update that you gave us today with the ordinance, please.
Yes, basketball and wrestling are contact sports that will not be allowed until phase four and/or until there is an effective vaccine. So because they are high-contact sports, those two sports, the other one will not happen. The other one is swimming. And I think there will, there will need to be some discussion about swimming. And I'm sure that Mr. Early will put a process in place so that all students are able to remain safe. But that's the only winter sport right now that will be allowed to move forward at this point. Basketball, again, high-contact, and football, I mean, I'm sorry, and wrestling, definitely high-contact sports. And the governor put that out early. I mean, that's why we took the basketball hoops down in the city, because that, that was flagged really early in the pandemic as a sport that could not move forward because of the contact.
Yeah, we took the hoops down, Pat Sullivan, we actually, Helen, two weeks before the official, official word, we took them down because it congregated again. We've kept them down. We hope someday we're going to get them back up, but we took them down early.
Yeah, and at the last school committee, the winter sports came up. So we just wanted to make sure that we gave you an update of what we knew. And so it looks like we'll only be voting on swimming.
And at the meeting, I will make sure that I have the documents to update you so that you can see in writing exactly what the recommendation and the guidance is from the Commonwealth.
Thank you. And then we'll put that on the November 12th agenda for you to vote on, if you want to be part of this.
Okay, I'm going to let Commissioner Colton Harris and Detective Sullivan, Assistant Kerrigan go ahead. Thank you. R2 V2. All right, thank you, everybody. And I want to thank the school committee, every group, for your patience. This is important. We wanted to get all the information out, and we wanted to take on all the questions as we prepare to move forward, and also the town hall meeting, and then the formalized votes for November 12th. If there's no other questions, no other questions on this, A, which was the update on ventilation report from O'Reilly, Talbot, Open Associates Incorporated, discussion around school reopening in sports. We'll now move to, if there are none, we'll now move to B, discussion around the cultural sensitivity within curriculum and staff. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent World.
Thank you, Mayor. We put together a presentation to you, for you tonight, and we planned some discussion around some of the work that's been going on with our Curriculum and Instruction Department relative to curriculum and professional development relative to cultural diversity. So I'd like Stephanie, your show winner team, to make a presentation to you tonight on what we're, what we're doing, and some of the PD we're engaging in, and what we're planning. And then open it up under the vice chair for some discussion.
Good evening, school committee. So tonight, we're going to present with the academic team, Paul Foster and Dr. Alanda Johnson, of what we've been doing for the diversity and inclusion in the curriculum, as well as what our plan is moving forward. So the first part of the presentation, we'll discuss, we'll talk about district level, what we've done, and then we'll talk about each content. And then the second part of the presentation, we'll be talking about moving ahead, what we're planning at the district level, and what we're going to be doing within each content. There's many initiatives that we've been doing over the past few years at the district level. One is the Promise Fellows, which has been creating a pipeline of highly qualified candidates to become committed leaders within SPS that represent our diverse student population. We've been doing Race Matters, which was a partnership with Healing Racism, with the Healing Racism Institute of the Pioneer Valley. It consisted of principal participation and two full days of a Healing Racism workshop. And it was attended by approximately 50 principals and cabinet members, where it encouraged no more than two principals per session. Currently, we've been working with Dr. Kalise Warnum over the past eight months, and she's discussed microaggressions, implicit bias, how to mark the moment, and skills and strategies to use within the classroom. We've had Dr. Tyrone Howard present numerous times about systematic racism, race and equity, and closing the achievement gap. We've also done training with Dr. Michael Dodge about inclusivity, underrepresented groups in education, and the impact of socio-economic status in our classroom. And finally, starting back, I want to say in January, there was a committee that came together that consisted of the SCA, Springfield Public School Staff, and the Pioneer Valley Project, whose purpose was to work together to make a collective impact in transforming school climate, confronting institutional racism, and promoting academic excellence. And from that group, that's where we had decided to consult and hire Dr. Kalise Warnum to work on the microaggressions, implicit bias, and marking the moment. So after conducting all of these trainings, we really needed to put it into action. And this year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed added to what we called SMART goals. So in Massachusetts, we have SMART goals, where educators and administrators have professional practice goals as well as student learning goals. And moving forward, there's an inclusive and an equitable part of the goal. Inclusive, the definition being bringing traditionally marginalized people, particularly those most impacted, into processes, activities, and decision-making. And then having it also be equitable, which means we want the element of fairness or justice to address the systematic injustice, inequity, or oppression that occurs. And so as educators and administrators are forming their goals, we are including the inclusive and equitable part. When we talk about our evaluation system, which in Springfield we call SEEDs, it has priority rubric area elements. And in prior years, we focused on four elements. This year, we're actually doing six. And the three that focus on the training that we've been doing are meeting diverse needs, safe learning environment, and respecting differences. And the reason why, you know, we really need to focus in on these is because when we talk about meeting diverse needs, we want to look at practices that are going, that are going to accommodate different learning styles, needs, interests, including those with disabilities in the English language learners. When we talk about the safe learning environment, we want to use rituals and routines and appropriate responses that create and maintain a safe intellectual and physical environment where students take academic risks. So we want students to be participating where they feel safe. And finally, when we get to respecting differences, we want to use practices and strategies that enable students to demonstrate respect for and affirm their own and others' differences related to background, identity, languages, strengths, and challenges. And so as we're looking at equity and diversity and meeting the needs of all students, as well as the training that we've done, we want to make sure that it's all aligned. And we felt like adding in these additional rubric area elements would support the learning that we've done, as well as supporting students. So specifically, the academic team has done training. We've also submitted, last year, we had the opportunity to work with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, and they asked if anyone wanted to submit their curriculum to John Hopkins. And John Hopkins then pulled apart the curriculum and did an audit to give us concrete data on places where they thought that we might have holes. And they focused on diversity and underrepresented groups within the curriculum. We're also working with Better Lessons, which the district, we've worked with them for the past couple of years. Paul Foster had found them, and they've been fantastic. And we are doing two trainings. One is Anti-Racist Instruction for K-8, and the other one is Curriculum for Social Justice. And when we talk about the anti-racist instruction, it's going to support us to define the traditional gaps of how racism is or is not explored in the K-8 curriculum, and then explore, it's going to help us explore a framework that integrates and acknowledges historical and current events while honoring students' lived experiences. The Curriculum for Social Justice is going to help us define the tools and approaches to critique that content that we really, that we already have. And finally, with the Distance Learning Playbook, that was a professional development that was done with all administrators. It was preparing us for distance learning, and the intent was to use what was going to work best to accelerate students' learning while maintaining a focus on equity. And there's also professional development sessions created for each module, which schools are currently going to start using on November 3rd. Here's just some slide, one slide of what Better Lessons does. It's professional development and coaching to equip teachers and leaders. There's strategic planning with leaders. And then there's also personalized support that aligns to school improvement plans. And the "who" just says some of the schools and the participants, topics that were completed, such as building meaningful relationships, synchronous learning, equity at a distance, meeting the needs of all learners, leading for equity, and anti-racist instruction. And the Better Lessons, they don't just do the workshop. There's also coaching with it. And so you develop a plan of when it's going to be done. You meet with them again when it's completed. So it's an ongoing training. Next, we're going to go into the content. So we're going to talk about cultural diversity and equity within each content area. And the first one that we are going to be talking about is computer science.
Good evening. So I think as folks know, I believe we've shared this with you previously. But we have been, we're three years into a project called Computer Science for All, where we are, it's funded by the National Science Foundation, and we are working with our own elementary school teachers to design computer science and computational thinking lessons for students at the K-5 level. So the goal is that every kindergarten through fifth grader in the Springfield Public Schools is being taught elements of computer science throughout their elementary school experience. And one of the really, one of the things we probably have not brought to you previously is the ways, are the ways in which equity is a central focus of the CS4All project. And so especially this year, we have teams of teachers who are designing computer science lessons for second and fifth graders. And we have done PD with our participating teachers relying on content from a book called Cultivating Genius by Dr. Goldie Muhammad. And Dr. Muhammad has a model called the Hill Model that is really developed from 19th century African-American educational traditions, right? And this model is focused on the idea that every lesson has to include four components. And you can see those here. I won't read them to you, but identity, or I won't read the whole thing. Identity, skills, intellectualism, and criticality. So traditional lessons usually will have skills and intellectualism, right? The lesson is developing a discrete set of knowledge or skills. But part of what Dr. Muhammad says in the Hill Model is lessons also need to help students develop their identity and kind of further explore who they are as people. And then also, lessons need to help students develop their criticality, right? The way in which they see and analyze the world. And so we've been doing PD with our teachers who are building these computer science lessons around this model, so that when they're building their lessons, they're thinking about how, in the process of teaching computer science, am I helping students in my classroom think about their identity? How am I helping them think, develop their criticality? I'll give an example, right? In the context of computer science, when you think about, for example, facial recognition software, there are already cases around the country where people have been falsely charged with crimes using facial recognition software, because AI is based on the data that's fed into it. And data that's fed into it can be based on practices that have been historically discriminatory. And so we want to be teaching not just computer science, the specific set of skills, but teaching our students the ways in which they can take computer science and kind of look at how it's applied in places like social media or facial recognition, and how discrimination can be replicated using that technology. So that's an example of building criticality into the lesson. So those are a few of the things in the computer science content area, where we're really trying to support, you know, student identity development and really have a focus on equity. And I think I am handing it off to secondary ELA.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Brian Dickey. I'm the Director of Secondary ELA and Libraries. And our department this year was lucky enough to be a part of the John Hopkins Institute Curriculum and Assessment Audit that Stefani was talking about. And after analyzing their findings, we discovered that our efforts over the past six or seven years of integrating relevant multicultural, diverse texts and resources has been effective. Their analysis concluded that our most significant strength of the secondary ELA curriculum was that it exposes students to a variety of texts that promote social, emotional, and societal awareness, and that indeed, diversity and curricular, excuse me, and cultural relevance are included throughout all of our curriculum grades six through 12. So that's the good news. We also discovered that there was a striking weakness in our curriculum in that there was an absence of LGBTQ texts and resources. And with that in mind, we spent a large portion of the ELA budget to correct that issue. So we initially formed teams of ILSs, teachers, department chairs, and read everything that the LGBTQ community had out there. We vetted and chose and purchased text sets for each grade level, six through 12, and for each of our schools, middle and high. So that was exciting to be able to do that. Recently, during the closure, we also chose culturally diverse, award-winning texts for the MGM Book Giveaway for all of our students and families. In a very timely purchase, we purchased the Mass eBook Collection for the district, adding approximately 100,000 diverse titles to our library, so that now, with the click of a button, our families and students can access these titles. The librarians have been part of this equity and diversity teaching and learning this year. They held and facilitated a professional development session on multicultural literature with a local author. They also attended a literacy summit hosted by the Springfield Public School Libraries, and which basically helped them adjust their collections and buy the appropriate books for our diverse learners and our diverse population. They also took part in a weekly Read-Allow during the closure. And they, we chose an award-winning culturally diverse text, children's text for Elementary, Dragons in a Bag. And we had hundreds of participants, students, and families take part in it over an eight-week cycle. That was fun. And lastly, we know how important it is for our students to see themselves reflected in our literature. So we made another big purchase through Scholastic, purchasing multicultural library sets for all grades six through 12, one set for each of middle and high schools. Next up would be my colleagues in elementary ELA.
Hi, good evening. I'm Laura Menz, the Director of Literacy for Elementary ELA, and I'm here with my colleague Kate Asher, the Supervisor of Literacy. I'm going to talk about the first couple of bullets, and then Kate will talk about the next two bullets. But before- But before we jump into the slide, just want to give you a little context about multicultural books and what they may contain or what they may be. So multicultural books may be, may contain characters of color, as well as main characters that represent a minority point of view. They may be written by an author of diversity or color, and they may be written from their perspective. Multicultural books may share ideas, stories, and information about cultures, race, religion, language, and traditions. These books can also be nonfiction, but written in a way that kids will find entertaining and informative. And they also may embrace special needs or even hidden disabilities like ADHD, ADD, and anxiety. So with this knowledge, we've strived to select materials that fit this description in one or more ways. We acknowledge the challenge, as what is available is not always sufficient. Our efforts require our attention to ensure children are treated to books that they see themselves in, as well as to see and learn about others. It's important to note, while about 37% of the US population and about 50% of K to 12 students in the US are members of a racial minority, only about 10% of children's books published between 1994 and 2014 were by or about people of color. Certainly in the last six years, publishers are taking notice, and so are we. So let's take a look at those four bullets and talk about some of the things we have been doing. We've developed and shared lists of books and collections that do reflect diversity. We've worked with our building-level coaches, our building-level ELA ILSs, to curate some of these lists, ensuring that it's not just our smaller team making these selections. And we've shared lists from other notable sources that promote diversity collections, such as from the International Literacy Association or the Colors of Us site, which is a fabulous website. Our K to two reading and our K to five writing curriculum, curriculum publisher, the Center for the Collaborative Classroom, also we call it CCC, it's a nonprofit, and they have focused on equity more so through the lens of social, emotional learning, identity, and building collaborative communities. The implementation PD we've supported with this curriculum has centered on how teachers can support students in these ways during instruction. The identity piece is huge. It's found very predominantly in the writing component, and it features authors from all walks of life in video segments that highlight the author's perspectives as writers. And our goal is helping students to see themselves as writers. We can all be writers. CCC also did a deep dive into their collection and found that overall, people of color are represented about 49% of the time in their books, and white people 51% of the time. 29% of the characters are predominantly female, while 29% are predominantly male, and 42% have no predominant gender. They took this as a call to action. We'll discuss this later in our presentation when we talk about some of the steps we're taking forward. But I'm going to pass it over to Kate to talk about these last two bullets.
Good evening. I'm Kate Asher, Supervisor of Literacy. Currently, we implement the Big Day for Pre-K in our classes, as well as in some of our community-based partner programs. Although these collection, the collection of titles are developmentally appropriate for our youngest learners and sets the stage for many rich conversations, we acknowledge some shortfalls and have supplemented with collections or titles that address social or emotional development and differently-abled characters. Last year, we were able to bring the Scholastic Lip Pro to the district to support independent reading at school and at home in grades K to five. This online platform has been a plus when thinking about equity in terms of access to books. Scholastic has determined that only 27% of their titles are diverse. Their criteria include authors writing about diverse experiences in their own voices, characters of color in stories with cultural relevance, and authentic books about world cultures and communities. To be considered a diverse book in their collection, their criteria disavows any books with anthropomorphic characters or books that feature people of color without any colored cultural relevance. It's also noteworthy that the collection includes specific supports to assist diverse learners and English language learners in comprehension and fluency. Also, the collection includes 300 eBooks in Spanish, a combination of authentic Spanish titles, as well as popular English books translated into Spanish. All families and home engagement, all family and home engagement resources are also available in both English and in Spanish, but certainly we acknowledge our Springfield community is a community of many more languages. And this challenge goes back to the data that Laura shared on what is available to us. Publishers definitely need to do better, and we recognize that. Now I'm turning it over to our ELL Department.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Rodriguez Pion, and I am the Supervisor for the English Language Learners Department. The ELL Department has chosen National Geographic Publishing Company for their elementary ESL curriculum, which is known for its diversity and global inclusion. The company's goal is to recognize the contributions from various groups that reflect diversity in cultures and ethnic groups, religions, abilities, just to name a few. National Geographic also employs a diversity specialist, Dr. Jennifer Turner, who has published multiple books on teaching students in urban settings. The secondary curriculum comes from Saddleback Education Publishing, and it is an ESL literacy resource that supports English learners at the secondary level while focusing on struggling readers. So this curriculum focuses on the newcomers to our country, English learners, and students with disabilities. Our department offers district-wide trainings yearly around the various cultures represented in our district to allow teachers to gain insight, ask questions, and deepen their understanding on supporting students from different backgrounds. We also offer professional development that focuses on increasing educators' self-awareness of social identities likely to appear in their classrooms and schools. These learning opportunities have increased teachers' confidence and have developed their communication skills to support our diverse student population. And now we are going to hear from our math department.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sarah Trillo, the Director of Math, and I'm here tonight with my colleague, Dr. Beatrice Johnson, the Supervisor of Mathematics. We wanted to take a moment to set the stage regarding culturally-responsive mathematics teaching prior to reviewing each of our curricular resources and how they support both cultural diversity and the needs of all learners. Much of the information we are about to share is derived directly from the authors and researchers who wrote the three math programs we currently use. Culturally-responsive mathematics teaching is based on creating a learning environment focused on mathematical sense-making, where each student feels valued for who they are, for the ways that they engage in mathematical reasoning, and for their contributions to the collective success of those within the classroom. Each of the curriculum resources we have purchased over the past few years ascribes to the tenants of culturally-responsive mathematics teaching. However, culturally-responsive mathematics teaching is so much more than inserting students' names and cultural references into mathematical problems. Instead, it requires teachers to consider, or possibly reconsider, the mathematics learning environment they've created and how it reflects these four elements. One, how are we supporting deep learning by ensuring student success with coherent and connected mathematical understandings? Two, how are we engaging and valuing identities by honoring students' experiences, communication practices, and communities? Three, how are we sharing authority by building inclusive collaborative norms and routines? And finally, four, how are we applying mathematics by using mathematics to understand and investigate mathematical situations? As we look at this slide, we start by making note of Ready Classroom Math. Ready Classroom Math, as you know, is the core program for students in grades K to five. This program includes tasks that support high levels of cognitive demand and deep learning opportunities. This work is supported by embedded routines in the program that develop a classroom culture that supports multiple representations and solution paths while placing a heavy emphasis on student discourse. Additionally, each unit contains information for the educator on community and cultural responsiveness, and how that work can be specifically connected to certain sessions within a unit. Both of these aspects of Ready Classroom Math align to the tenants of culturally-responsive mathematics teaching. Dr. Johnson?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Beatrice Johnson, and I'm going to talk to you about secondary math. Illustrative math is the core program for students in grades six through eight. Illustrative math is, again, aligned to culturally-responsive mathematics teaching. Illustrative math includes tasks that allow students from different racial and ethnic backgrounds to draw on their funds, their funds of knowledge, and provides time and support in the curriculum to elicit what students already know about a context. For activities where students are working with the context, the launch to that activity elicits students' existing experience and understanding with that context. One of our instructional routines, Notice and Wonder, is designed, in part, to elicit what students already know about a real-world or mathematical context. Additionally, illustrative math includes situations that are familiar or meaningful to students. Recognizing that it is very difficult to find contexts that are universally familiar to all students, illustrative math supports teachers to attend to the needs of the range of familiarity amongst their students when needed. Both of these aspects of illustrative math align directly to culturally-responsive mathematics teaching. Discovery Education Math Tech Book is the core program for students in grades nine through 11. Tech Book is, again, aligned to culturally-responsive mathematics teaching. Math Tech Book is specifically developed for diverse student audiences and curated by experts for ease of access. Tech Book includes high-quality, multimodal content essential to improving academic vocabulary, breaking down barriers to learning, providing all students multiple ways to shine, and engaging students in higher-level thinking. Additionally, Tech Book meets the unique needs of students with a variety of differentiation tools integrated at point-of-use. Access to Lexile levels of core content, authentic Spanish translation, 180 additional languages available through Google Translate, and strategies for teaching students with specific needs and special needs and English learners. Internally, we set ourselves requirements to ensure that the curriculum is accessible free of bias, provides windows and mirrors, has low barriers to entry, maintains high standards for rigorous grade-level mathematics, and supports teachers to develop classroom norms and environments that disrupt stereotypes and bias. Each of our core programs is working in service of each of these internal requirements. I work along with Desi on the Mathematics Alignment for Equity Committee. My work on this committee, I continually bring back to the work in the math department. And now you were here from the science department.
Thanks, Beatrice. Good evening, everybody. I'm Ron St. Ammon. I'm the Director of Science here in Springfield. And so just to set the stage a little, over the last several years, we've rewritten our curriculum to meet the revised science standards. And the focus of the standards is really on student sense-making in science through the application of science and engineering practices, we call them, but the skills of science and the disciplinary core ideas, which is the science content. So one of the big focus areas in our implementation of the new standards has been increasing student voice and productive student talk in the classroom, which can actually help us center on marginalized students' voice. So as many of my colleagues have already discussed, our students need to see the relevance and see themselves in the work. So in doing this, we're able to surface what kids already know and understand, and they can bring in their cultural understandings as well, so that they can see themselves in the work of scientists. So some of the things that we've been doing in PD to bring the new standards in and to enhance equity and diversity in the science classroom is really focusing on phenomena-based science in our curriculum. And of course, all of our curricular resources, which I've brought before you in the past, are based on this five-E method of science inquiry, and that really helps us to meet our goals, because it allows us to do several things that we've been working with our teachers on through PD. So as I said, we can capitalize on students' cultural and linguistic resources from their backgrounds, whether through their home or community, which will serve as intellectual resources in the science classroom. We're connecting and building on that background knowledge with students' disciplinary knowledge of science. We're connecting science concepts to the daily lives and future lives of our students, which helps them to be motivated to learn science. And then, of course, we're using multiple modes of representation and multiple experiences from, you know, traditional labs, but data to be interpreted, artwork, and other forms of instruction that tap into a variety of students' strengths, and again, allows them to see themselves in the work. And this also helps us reinforce the vision of the framework that science is about making sense of the world around us, including phenomena and design challenges. And again, it helps to make the work relevant for kids, so they can see that it relates to their lives, makes them more interested in it, and want to be a part of that work. So now I'll turn it over to World Languages.
Good evening. I'm Anne Fariter, Director of Language Acquisition. I'd like to begin by sharing the following point of clarification. The Office of Language Acquisition at the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed is encouraging all districts throughout the Commonwealth to use the term "world languages" moving forward, replacing the former long-term moniker "foreign languages," which is why you'll hear and see references to "world languages" or simply WL referenced here now and in future communications. In the 2019-20 school year, both social-emotional learning and social justice themes were explicitly and intentionally woven into the Massachusetts World Languages curriculum framework. I worked on a statewide committee last winter and spring, helping to revise our WL standards, which remain in draft form until the public commentary period concludes. We hope to publish the revised curriculum and standards this April. Since the fall of 19, I've been using a text entitled "Words and Actions: Teaching Languages Through the Lens of Social Justice" with my department chairs and our PLC. I was able to give each of them a copy, and soon every member of our department will also have one, so we can incorporate it into our future PD activities. Regardless of the second language being studied, world languages curricula historically and intrinsically integrate themes in support of addressing one of our five essential strands of WL instruction, namely "culture" with a capital C. The culture strand is also integral to the World Readiness Standards for Learning Languages. The broad categories of products, which include things people have and use, such as books, tools, laws, food, music, and games; practices, which focus on what people do and their patterns of social interaction; and perspectives, including meanings, attitudes, values, and ideas. Products, practices, and perspectives are focal in WL curricula and instruction, and we integrate these facets into our department PD ongoing. In our department chairs' PLC, we have begun the work around cultural proficiency the district has been emphasizing, and I've shared articles and research with my chairs subsequent to the outstanding workshops led by Kalise Warnum. We will continue to focus on this critical theme as a department as SPS continues to expose more and more schools to Dr. Warnum's work. Since the onset of the Since the onset of the pandemic, I've partnered with purveyors of curricula and digital tools designed specifically for application in the WL classroom setting in support of skills development in the ever-essential areas of reading, writing, speaking, and listening. This has resulted in greater collective confidence among WL faculty who strive to engage all students remotely at present, while doing so with cultural sensitivity. In our ongoing department PD, we will continue to focus on maximizing digital platforms, such as NearPod, as well as continue our work with the Distance Learning Playbook. In August PD, we reviewed modules one through four, and we will work in modules five and six on November 3rd. Now we'll move to AP. Here we go. So let's take a moment to look at the data on this slide. Five years of data pertaining to race and ethnicity within and among our students who've achieved qualifying scores on AP testing. I believe this is a great cause for celebration. I'd like to bring your attention to our Asian students. Between 2016 and 20, quite a jump in qualifying scores. And absolutely among our Latinx students. Look at that growth. From 68 in 2016 to 128 last spring. Our overall is astounding, astounding. I would suggest that our increase in qualifying scores over the last five years speaks directly to inclusive and equitable practices. While we may have tested fewer kids because of COVID in the spring of 2020, our achievement rose almost 20%. So I think we can all take a collective bow looking at this data because it takes a village, as corny as that sounds. We were a team. We do this together, not in silos or in isolation. It's a team effort, and I'm so proud to be part of it. So now I believe it's time to pass the torch to my colleague, Director of Visual and Performing Arts.
Hi, I'm Julie Jaren. As Anne mentioned, I'm Director of Visual and Performing Arts. And arts and culture are terms that are often used synonymously. The arts are all about communicating culture. Some important points that support and contribute to SPS Arts Curricula's attention to cultural diversity are as follows. Students learn about beliefs, ideas, and feelings of people from various ethnic origins, religions, and cultures, as well as the history of mankind. In culturally proficient and responsive ways, SPS Arts educators start with "who we are", bringing students from their known world to new artistic experiences. In this way, students find similarities and differences represented and reflected in the cultures of others. Additionally, in visual and performing arts courses, students gain artistic knowledge and skills that enable them to express who they are, where they come from, and what's important to them. Community partners, such as the Community Music School of Springfield, the Drama Studio. Additionally, the Enchanted Circle Theater and Springfield Museums support these efforts by providing extended learning, performance, and exhibition opportunities to our students. Springfield Public Schools' Visual and Performing Arts educators continually participate in professional development and reflective practices that advance cultural proficiency. Recent professional development offerings have included Discourse and Conversation on Culturally Responsive Teaching with a Music Perspective, Scaffolding in the Arts for English Language Learners, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Resources, and This Is Me, This Is Us. And now we'll hear from the Health and Physical Education Department.
Hi, my name is Michelle Balch, and I'm the Director of Health and Physical Education. We have worked a lot on trying to be more inclusive and culturally responsive in physical education and health. We have been piloting the Get Real curriculum for the past three years, and we've expanded it, including more schools every year. And this curriculum is designed to be inclusive and culturally responsive. It includes role plays, videos, and scenarios that represent our diverse student body and are grounded in SEL strategies. We've also been doing extensive professional development for K-12 health and PE teachers, including educator language used in the gym, how to organize groups in non-gender-specific ways, and to be able to provide inclusive opportunities based on students' needs and interests, not just physical fitness levels. We have also been working in collaboration with the School Adjustment Counselors and City Quebec's coordinators to implement the SEL curriculum, which is important for students to be able to recognize and understand others' perspectives before they're forming judgments about them, focusing on feelings and setting goals, which will cultivate students' tenacity and a growth mindset. We've also adopted the Spark Inclusive PE Curriculum, which is a curriculum that focuses on adapting lessons and equipment so that students of all abilities can participate in PE. And it also included a full-day professional development and training for secondary educators. And with that, I am going to turn it over to the Humanities Department.
Good evening. My name is Tom Shelly. I'm the Director of Humanities. I work primarily with the Social Studies and History Department. We are revising our curriculum to align with the new frameworks for the history and social sciences. This is to ensure that our students will be prepared to make informed civic choices and assume their responsibility for strengthening equality, justice, and liberty in and beyond the United States. With that, we've researched and purchased curriculum resources that from kindergarten through grade eight align with the new framework, as well as provide opportunities to make connections with the past, with what is happening in our local, state, national, and global communities today. Working to deliver an effective history and social science education that incorporates diverse perspectives, acknowledges perceptions of events are affected by race, ethnicity, culture, religion, education, gender, sexual orientation, disability, and personal experience. So we want to make sure that everybody is aware that there are different perspectives and how that we can be respectful of all of those perspectives. We've created professional development for the implementation of the Grade Eight civics instruction, and I've created a Grade Eight cross-school collaboration that is working with the resources from the Harvard Democratic Knowledge Project to help our students understand civics, civil rights, as well as to create a project based on our own community. We are also, we have worked and are also working on voter registration drives to register and preregister all of our eligible students. We want to provide lessons, are we providing lessons that engage students in civics and allow our students to understand the importance of their voice in making change and making informed decisions. Some of our lessons include history of voter impact, civil rights, and even voter suppression. We want to make certain that our students are well-aware the importance of voting and why they can, how they can make that change and difference in the world, and that everybody's voice is equal. That being said, we're going to hear from Guidance and Counseling.
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Johnson, and I am the Executive Officer for Student Services. In Springfield Public Schools, we have adopted a comprehensive school counseling policy that is a program based on the American School Counselor Association and the Mass Model for School Counseling. It's a comprehensive framework that guides the work of our counselors pre-K through 12 across three student development areas. Where we focus on academics, where we support students' how-to-learn-to-learn career, where we support students on learning to work, and social-emotional, where we support students on learning to live. The model is equity and access-focused because it focuses on all students. And when we say "all students," our revised policy is going to include language that speaks specifically about what we mean about "all". It refers to students who may have different learning needs, different ethnic backgrounds, creed, religion, national origin or ancestry, age, and sexual orientation, gender, gender identity or expression, socioeconomic status, homelessness, or disability. And next slide, please. In order to accomplish this, you know, it's so important to for counselors to work collaboratively with teachers because while counselors don't directly teach English, math, social studies, science, humanities, physical education, et cetera, they support students on providing them with the skills to be successful in those content areas. And that's accomplished through a multi-tiered system of support, where a school counselor program advocates for equity and access and success for all students using a three-tiered approach, where they provide services for all students through classroom delivery and lessons and school-wide activities to a targeted group of students in Tier Two, where that may include small group counseling. And then there's Tier Three, where it's delivered to individual students who may need or require additional support. So it's giving them the core, plus more, and more. Next slide, please. There is an intersection of school counseling and equity with social-emotional learning and trauma-informed practice. And this is a quote from Dina Simmons, who states that "if we teach social-emotional learning in ways that ignore equity, we will woefully fail our students, particularly our most disenfranchised students." So integrated social, emotional, and academic development are going to have the impact we aspire for all young people. And social-emotional learning, more than ever, is important so that our children can grow up in a world where they feel valued, respected, and included. Next slide, please. To really think about how we're moving forward with our work as counselors, you know, it's important to really look at college access and success. And we do this pre-K through 12 in our district because equity is integral to college and career success as higher education is a critical institution that promotes social and economic mobility and evolve in democratic citizenry. And that is going to be, economics is key to having a thriving community and city. And our school counselors work directly with students' post-secondary aspirations, including fit and match, and supporting equitable college and career access to increased post-secondary opportunities. As I previously stated, it's an economic issue around ensuring that our students receive a post-secondary credential so that they are able to care for themselves and their family. According to Georgetown University workforce, our country needs to be able to have and create better counseling systems that gives people, starting in middle and high school, good advice on careers and systems that would carry on helping people right on their, right through their entry into the labor market. And not only do we do that in middle school, we do it pre-K through 12. We're at the elementary school levels. We're focusing on students with getting them to explore and have an interest so that when they get to middle school, they're making connections between their career aspirations and their academics, and then moving from middle school where they're able to select a high school based on their interests. And our data informs us that attainment and achievement gap for first-generation students and students of color, particularly young men, positively impact underrepresented populations. And school counselors have been engaged in the following support initiatives. We have 100 Mails to College, which is for our males and our low-income males and males of color to increase enrollment and retention. And a key component of it is healthy masculinity, which is, which are strategies we teach our young men to be successful, not only in college, but in life. And then we have our college-bound girls, who, where we focus on many of the same priority strategies as 100 Mails to College, but we also focus on healthy self-image. And while our girls are doing better than our young men, we have to make sure to realize that the educational needs of our girls of color are equally as critical to our boys of color. And when we look at college access and success, we're also thinking about how do we ensure that underrepresented students are represented in careers such as STEM, healthcare, and science. And our students, as we just heard from Anne Fariter, have greater access to AP courses, which gives them the skills to be successful at the college level. And lastly, for this slide, if we're going to talk about having a more diverse and inclusive workplace, if students of color are not encouraged to go to college, we will never have the diverse working environment that we so need, so much, that so much needed so that students can become educators, they can become engineers, and a whole host of other career paths. Next slide. Now we're going to be talking about moving forward, and I'm going to turn it back over to Stefania.
Moving forward, oh, Alyssa back. We're continuing with the professional development that we had started last year that we have not been able to complete yet, and so we'll continue working with Dr. Kalise Warnum. Okay, go back, Alyssa. No, I can hear you.
Are we going to stop for discussion at this point?
Yes, we can stop right here.
Yeah, I want to open it up to school committee members if they have any questions or comments on this comprehensive presentation. So if you could unshare your screen just for the moment, so we can see the people there. Thank you. I don't know if there was any questions or comments from school committee members of that very comprehensive presentation. Ms. Taylor and Ms. Hirsch.
Anne, here you are.
You're a little muffled there, Antonia.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I apologize. Apologize for having to turn my video off. I'm in my car. So I wanted to ask a question. I think that the presentation was really good and very comprehensive, as you stated. But the one thing that I am still wondering about is just more focal points as far as racial equity is concerned. I think that the diversity piece is definitely there, but I still am not seeing enough of a focus on the racial piece. And I say that particularly because there have been a lot of complaints from constituents, particularly students and staff, who have talked about some of the reading that we have, some of the words such as the N-word that shows up in a lot of material, some of the depictions of black people as slaves and maids, and not really talking about the pre-1619 history of black people, or talking about the fact that, you know, there are so many other contributions that black people have brought and offered into the country. So I think that outside of the lines of the cultural piece, we need to specifically hone in on the black piece and the brown piece. Because I think that with all being said, as far as abilities, as far as LGBTQ and all these other things, the racial piece is still always going to be something that will be an issue if we don't really focus on that specific piece of it. And so I just wanted to bring that up because of those complaints and those conversations that I've had with constituents. And also wanted to inquire more specifically about even talking about the arts and music. Again, going back to the music specifically of black people, not talking about current like hip-hop, but really the history and the context of what, you know, for example, the slaves, when they did the songs and all that, and the meanings behind them, the communication and all of that. There's so much depth to these stories, and it also correlates so closely with our history as a city. The Underground Railroad that was in the city, the St. John's Church and all these historical pieces. So I think there's this opportunity for us not only to talk So I think there's this opportunity for us, not only to talk about the history of black folks, but to really talk about the history of the city and the great things that this city has done to really make it so that black people could be free and live free. And, and, and so I just wanted to bring that standpoint up. And the other piece that I wanted to bring up is a little, is a little bit of an offset from this, but since I have the, the opportunity in the ears, I wanted to say that a lot of the other districts have started to implement, even if it's for a special committee, what's called a racial equity special committee or subcommittee, so that they can specifically target the racial piece, not just diversity, because I think this is, there's so many lenses and umbrellas to diversity, but specifically to racial equity piece. So I wanted to, to bring that up as something that I wanted to propose for us to look into as part of our work as we continue this very difficult and challenging work. So I want to make sure I acknowledge that, yes, you all have done a tremendous job, but this is just one lens that I've, I've had a number of folks bring to my attention. Thank you.
Sure. So so I so let me begin my comments by saying, you know, thank you to, to superintendent and Stefania Rochella and the entire academic team for the work that you all put in this evening. It is absolutely appreciated. And it, it's helpful to have this level of, of insight. And the way, or at least my understanding, the way that some of this came about was because some of us reached out to the vice chair, and I know that I had a conversation with him as well as the superintendent, considering all of the things that were happening across the country, the racial injustices, the social injustices that we were seeing in the media and even things that were happening here in our city. And we knew that it was an opportunity to begin to have these conversations that we haven't necessarily been able to have. And so we were looking, I, at least I went to Chris and said, we need to be able to have a forum to have these really difficult conversations. And we also need to be figuring out what's happening in our, in our school buildings. What are we doing with respect to making sure that everyone from central office to school buildings are being trained? And most importantly, that our school district, our students are receiving the most culturally competent curriculum possible. We know that we are a district that is majority-minority, that we have, you know, black, our, our district is comprised of a majority of Latino and black students. So, you know, I still think that there's lots of conversations that we also have to have as a governing body. And what are the practices and policies that we are that we are following, that we're thinking about as policymakers? But one of the things that stood out to me a lot tonight, and I know because I too, I'd gotten a phone call regarding the literature, is that as a school committee member who has been since 2009, 2010, I can't remember, the last time that, and I think it was Brian Dickey and Declan O'Connor came before curriculum to talk about literature was when the late Antoinette Pepe was still on. So we have not, or at least not in my, my committee, curriculum and programs, we have not had a conversation at all in at least 10 years of what the current literature is looking like. And so I know that, and I remember it, I think Barbara was on because I remember there was quite a bit of conversation back then about the literature and how the, the changes that had taken place. I don't know if you remember, Brian, but I was actually pleased with some of the books that you guys had brought in. I remember we brought in Wes Moore. We had brought in the, the book around the young boy who was growing up on the, on the reservation that addressed LGBTQ issues. And so I was pleased. And so my hope is, is that at this particular point in time, 10 years later, we're going to be thinking about how are we going to change that curriculum with the time, but also to Latonia's point, and I don't know a lot about the 1619 curriculum. I've done some research, but I get that there is literature that we, that we are teaching our children or that our children are reading that negatively depict African-Americans and negatively depict Hispanics, and they use the N-word. And I'm not saying that we can throw all those books out, that we can throw the baby out with the bathwater, because we do have to ensure that our kids have an understanding of their past, have an understanding of what the, what the, what others are learning, where all of this is, is sort of coming from. But we also need to be thinking and making sure that we're also sharing with them literature that affirms who they are, that talks about our contributions as people of color. And so I think that I would love to hear more about this audit that was done and what that revealed. What did it show? Where, you know, where, where are we with respect to making sure that we have literature that is positive and that depicts the positive contributions? And the last thing I will say is that I do think it's really important, and you know, we're the city of first, that we should begin to think about how do we implement in our curriculum somewhere some local history. You know, I did the tour of the murals a couple of weeks back, and I had no idea that, you know, black women played a critical role in making sure that the slave catchers didn't come to Springfield, which was why they were so, why we were so critical to the Underground Railroad. So I think it's important for our, for our children to understand where they come from and not only how they've been treated, but what contributions they've made.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Any other questions or comments? Well, I think we're here unless
What was that? We can't hear, Chris.
The superintendent was asking whether, that long night, whether we should listen to the steps going forward at another meeting, but I might, I think we're here. I think we probably should. It may answer some of the comments that you made Denise, and the same that Latonia made. The, the plan on where, on what we need to do going forward may answer some of that. It may not answer it all, and that focuses another discussion down the road.
Chris, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. I was muted before. Hello? Oh, okay, thank you. So they have a diversity committee consisted of Pioneer Valley Project, Springfield Public Schools, and who else is the organization? There was three that.
Yeah, the SEA. Yes, the SEA.
All right. Is there a way that we can get a copy of who's on that committee?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, because I think it needs to be composed of some people in the community, local people in the community. So if we could just get a copy of that, please.
Can I ask a question? Are there any school, and I know that there's a real fine line about our role as as school committee members not being a part of the day-to-day operations and allowing our CEO, our superintendent to, to do that. I, I 100% agree with that. But is there not a role for school committee members to be a part of some of this work, especially when we're talking about diversity, inclusion? I, I'm not personally, because that becomes an issue. I mean, and I, and I'll also say this, and this is no slight to our school committee member Maria Perez, but we also have not had that subcommittee, right? So I think that people, I personally am feeling like this has always been a topic of urgency, but it feels like that even more now. And so I'm just wondering where, where does school committee fit in and where can we, we fit in? Like, I know that one time we were invited to the PD Center when we had a presentation, but where else can we fit in? Because we too need to know and have a better understanding when we sit down at the table to pass policy about what's happening district-wide.
Well, I think the curriculum subcommittee, we fully intend to bring everything forward through the curriculum subcommittee to have this discussion as we're adopting curriculums and continuing those discussions. That would be one value. Relative to the diverse hiring, Maria's subcommittee, we gathered the data from the hiring season, and she's planning a subcommittee to make a presentation then to the school committee on that piece also to answer that question. So we're working on that. We should have it out shortly. We had to gather all the data from the October 1 census on that, so we're putting together for you. But I think the subcommittees are where a lot of the work can be done on that. We fully intend to, we can review the present curriculum there and/or certainly look at all future curriculums with an eye towards this cultural diversity. And that would be the appropriate role. And that's, that's at the policy level. It's very, very appropriate.
And beyond that, Denise, I think once we listen to the plans that they're good, they have for going forward, it's, it would not, it certainly is within our jurisdiction that we're working session, have a more freewheeling discussion and a back and forth, which is something that we, we very, we obviously have a right to do. And if there's a need to create policy that comes out of that working session, where, when it's a working session around eyes on curriculum going forward and eyes on other issues going forward, and how a vision that some of us might have, and then it evolves into policy, but certainly a working session that's more open-ended, more freewheeling, more back and forth is something we should look at doing. Once we take a look, listen to what their plan, the plans are for going forward, and if it doesn't address everything that we need, then we should have some more working sessions.
I'm sorry, I have a.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Taylor, sorry.
I have a question. I apologize if it was answered because my audio went out for a second. But I wonder why the NAACP isn't involved, just because they do represent heavily the black people, the black community?
Involved in what, in what way?
As far as the racial diversity, I mean, the diversity committee that you have formulated with the PVP and SEA and these different groups, I wonder why, if, if that's something that can be discussed or the possibility. I know that they're very active. I know that the women of the NAACP have been very active on curriculum.
Is that the committee that was, that was being referred to? Is, that's not a committee that was started by the school system?
That's a committee that was started by the SEA, working with Pioneer Valley Project. And they reached out, then Lydia has been meeting with Greg, although they had some other people. So it's kind of grew up informally through that collaborative. I don't know if Lydia wanted to speak to it a little more, but but that didn't formally come through the school committee, but certainly adding something to that, I'm sure. Lydia, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yes. And so we met actually yesterday, and I know, Latonia, that one of the members reached out to you. Denise, I'm not sure if one has already reached out to you, and I know one has already reached out to Maria. And so we are trying to be inclusive of everyone. And so what we first wanted to do was kind of form the committee and put action to the committee, kind of like a mission and kind of like a vision and what that committee was looking to do to help inform. And so what we did was we came up with dividing it into four subcommittees. And one of them is curriculum, and one of them is diversity. To Denise's point, the difference between the curriculum and diversifying the workforce. And then we have two other subcommittees. And so we were in the process of inviting others to join us. And so part of what some of the members came up with yesterday was to reach out to school committee. And so we started that process. And so, Latonia, I think you, one of them reported that they had already reached, oh, Barbara, one of them did reach out to you also. And so we are in the process of just trying to figure that out. What we tried to do in the beginning when we formed the committee was to kind of give the committee a sense of what we were trying to accomplish, kind of a backwards lens. This is where we want to get to, and then working back to see who we needed, because we did talk about, you know, bringing Springfield in, because Springfield has a huge history with everybody represented here. You know, the African-American, the Latinos when we first got here, you know, the Irish. And so we don't want to leave anybody out. So we were really looking to, to work backwards. So the committee is still in the process of being formed. And Stefania referred to it earlier. That's where we kind of started off with Kalise Warnum, because we thought that it was dire enough to start somewhere in terms of understanding the culture of our students. And then really just, not only just putting it in in the curriculum as curriculum pieces, but then how do teachers deal with, when certain things come up? To the example that was brought up here, Latonia, I know the exact case that you're talking about, about the N-word and what happened in the classroom. So we've really been exploring all that, but we've only, really only met about four times. We were, we were trying to form it with the mission and the vision. But we definitely want school committee, because we really believe that if we're going to make a change, that we're going to need policies changed. And, and we need the school committee in order to do some of that. And so again, we are in the process of forming the committee, so you will be invited. And then when we come in, we do want to take the committee out into the community, because we have so much resources in the community, even when we were talking about the arts and music. You know, there is a lot of Latin things that occurred here in the beginning of time here in Springfield around the Latin beat. And so we want to bring all that together. So we agree with what everybody is saying here, and that is going to be the purpose eventually of the on committee, because it's about diversity, it's about inclusion, and it's about racial equity. And that's why we named it the Dire Community, uh, Committee.
Excuse me, Mrs. Martinez. Yes, how did they, did they reach, how did they reach out to me? Because I haven't received anything.
So why don't we, I'm happy to speak with you offline, because that's what was reported. And so I just want to make sure, and I'm sure that the person is listening tonight, so we can definitely talk.
Okay, thank you.
Assistant Superintendent, the three other entities that are involved in that committee, I think what I heard Mrs. Nair saying was, would you encourage them to invite the NAACP, especially the women's division of the NAACP to partner with that? And the other thing I heard you mention was for school committee people being invited. Please don't put a quorum of our committee because we could run afoul of open meeting laws.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And so that's why we were inviting one for each subcommittee so that we wouldn't cluster them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing now, we'll move to the is the last portion? Yes, last portion, please.
Yep, and we're going to go through these very fast. Okay, so moving forward, as I said, we're continuing to work with Dr. Kalise Warnum on dealing with microaggressions, implicit bias, marking the moment, and strategies to use in the classroom with students. As I said, our unannounced observations will be focusing on needs, safe learning environment, and respecting differences. We are continuing with the Promise Fellows Program. Ryan?
Yeah, so moving forward in secondary ELA and libraries, as you know, you know, there's always new writing, there's always new authors emerging, so we will continue to revise and vet and add culturally diverse, relevant resources as we always have to our secondary ELA curriculum. We also realize that some of our summative assessments don't actually reflect some of this great diverse literature. And so we're, we're revising those to add diverse reading passages to our summative assessments. You may know that some content areas have created video, video collections for distance learning, and we will continue to do that in secondary ELA, including and incorporating some of the LGBTQ texts. Moving forward with professional development, we're going to be doing two different book studies, one with the secondary ILSs and one with the secondary CHRS. You know, focusing on culturally, culturally responsive teaching and what that actually looks like in the classroom. And the librarians will also get some professional development in January on a great series from UC Berkeley on race and equity. And we are actually, because of recent events in our curriculum, we are actually going to form a committee with leaders in our, in our district and hopefully including members of our community to discuss curriculum resources and how better to incorporate racially sensitive subject matter and really guidelines surrounding how to do that in a classroom with teachers effectively and respective, respectfully. Because there are so, so many, so many taboos and, and. Because there are so, so many, so many taboos and thematic sensitive subject matters. That we, we, we know that we have to address this. Moving forward with elementary is next.
Hi, so as we move forward, we will continue to curate and distribute lists to enhance teaching and learning in a multitude of ways. Including reflecting diversity. As we mentioned earlier, CCC did a deep dive into their collections. And in the making meaning, reading comprehension component of the suite. They've identified more relevant and diverse titles across the grades to replace previous titles that not fitting the bill. This enhancement will definitely positively impact us in grades one and two. Laura is going to address these last two bullet, Laura?
Thanks Kate. As we move forward, we're in the process of selecting a new reading curriculum in grades three to five. With building knowledge at its core. So we're vetting products that have high ratings in accordance with the DesiCurate rubrics. And Ed Reports course for text quality. These measures, these rating measures, the representation of various cultures and perspectives and how the texts value diversity. So we're really hoping that we can address some of the concerns that school committee women, Hurst and Naylor spoke of earlier. With using these rubrics to help us really hone in on our product. And then also very much in the beginning stages. For our team and for educators that will help us adapt our materials and approaches for language usage around pronouns. It's something we really haven't tackled too much at the elementary level. For example, the use of the pronoun they is now more widely acceptable in place of he, she. And of course, this is a very simplistic and basic example of the concerns around inclusivity and pronouns. But then getting to some of this culturally responsive conversation that we were having with those of you. In between the two parts of this presentation. We're, we're really focused on culturally responsive practices in literacy learning. So we too are doing some book studies with our coaches. And we will be studying the works of two prominent voices in the field that you've heard about already tonight. From Ryan, the Zaretta Hammond text. And then really revisiting what Paul said earlier about the Goldie Muhammad work. I think when we look at those four skills that he identified, identity, the pursuit of skills, the pursuit of intellect. And the pursuit of criticality. I think when we hone in on that criticality piece, we might be getting a little bit closer to what you're talking about. With moving the needle a little bit on some anti racism and more culturally responsive practices in the district. Regardless of whatever our curriculum choices are, right? We want a well-informed educator in front of our children, making good choices in language and how we instruct children. I'm by no means an expert, and we all have a lot to learn, but I think these are really two good steps for my department at this time. ELL Department.
Hi, everyone, Carrie Martins, I'm the Director of English Language and Learners. So moving forward, we're going to continue to develop our relationships with partners like Saddleback. Who are currently in the process of researching underrepresented areas such as saddle, such as Nepal, India, Guatemala. We're going to consult with our Diversity and Equity and Inclusion Coordinator. And when we bring our new materials in, we'd like to bring them to the curriculum subcommittee. And have some real conversations about the curriculums that we're choosing. And making sure that books and materials that we have are culturally appropriate. Moving forward, we'll continue to address diversity and inclusion by offering PD across our district. We have done this before, but we'll continue to have our family liaisons provide PD in the areas of Nepali culture, Somali, Arabic, Vietnamese. Will also have some understandings around the Muslim culture. And then making sure that we have professional development where we do a parent engagement. Professional development that really focuses on cultural awareness when you're working with parents. And also continuing to do the trauma-informed care practices to support diverse learners. And thank you, and now you have from the math department.
So as we move forward as a math department, we will continue to reflect in our curricular resources and our teaching practices. To ensure that they are reflecting cultural diversity and that they are meeting the needs of diverse students. We are currently working with our curriculum partners to ensure that we are providing high-quality professional development. That supports these efforts and enhances our program delivery. In January, we will be working with our elementary math ILSs and our elementary principals. By providing professional, by providing a professional development opportunity entitled Discourse and Equity. The Intersection of Race, Data, and Mathematics. This will be led by a member of the National Professional Development Team from Curriculum Associates. And will focus on using discourse as a tool for equity within the mathematics classroom. Dr. Johnson?
Additionally, we are working to support our middle school and high school ILSs. By offering our catalyzing change books, book study that places a strong emphasis on access and equity to mathematics. Also, they will be embarking on a series of diversity talks through our partners discovery at Discovery Education. This webinar series features our top nation's top education leaders with a focus on cultivating equity and excellence. Finally, our high school ILSs will also be working through an asynchronous PD learning module. To build a stronger understanding of culturally responsive mathematical teaching practices. And now you'll hear from the science department.
So in science, moving forward, we'll continue to look at selection of phenomena. Which focus on the needs and issues of our community. Addressing real world problems that affect our students is highly motivating and helps them see themselves in the work. In terms of the PD that we're doing, and get gauging students in doing science. Encouraging a diversity of perspectives, which of course allows for more rigorous solutions. PD to aid teachers in helping students to see themselves in one another. As well as the teachers as knoers in the classroom. Teachers must have valued the diverse resources that we all bring to the social endeavor of science. In terms of curriculum committees, working to ensure curriculum and instruction are organized around phenomena. And design challenges that surface students' ideas, culture, and readiness to help drive future instruction. And then with our science leaders, the department chairs and ILSs, we're working on a book study. Science in the City: Culturally Relevant STEM Education by Brian Brown. He's a professor at Stanford who focuses on equity in science education. Particularly through the lens, lens of students being able to see themselves. And the use of discourse to promote their engagement in science. I will turn it over to visual and performing arts.
Moving forward, we have the new 2019 Mass Arts Curriculum Frameworks. That serves as the foundation for all we are now teaching in and through the arts. Rigorous artistic practice requires educators and students to make connections to diverse cultures. And to that point, just want to mention that the work that we've been doing in the arts does include. Throughout the curriculum, discussion about topics such as coded songs, spirituals, and freedom songs. Songs like Follow the Drinking Gourd that addresses the Underground Railroad. And how Harriet Tubman was, was a part of that. And how Follow the Drinking Gourd was all about the Big Dipper. So you know, this is happening in our curriculum and yet we still need to do more as Ms. Naylor presented earlier. Guiding principles aligned with SPS's focus on student identity, interest, and agency. And require focus on cultural diversity. Supporting the culturally diverse lens, the framework's guiding principles outline. That an effective arts education is relevant to students' interests. Makes connections with other disciplines and bodies of knowledge. Promotes family and community engagement, such as when our students perform at the Martin Luther King Day. At the Mass Mutual Center. And supports social and emotional growth. Additionally, an effective arts education program engages students with arts from a range of cultures and time periods. And is inclusive, all students participate and benefit. The goal of our PD and connected work will be to further our attention to cultural diversity. And develop SPS Arts curriculum documents that reflect the 2019 Mass Arts Curriculum Frameworks. Visual and performing arts educators have been getting familiar with and are now using the new art standards in lesson planning. Moving forward, we will fully reimagine, innovate, develop, and implement. An even more culturally responsive curricula in art, music, theater, and dance. And the newly added media arts domain, starting with pacing guides and then unit plans. And now we'll hear from Health and Physical Education.
So moving forward, we're going to take a look at working with our secondary educators more deeply. Incorporating race, equity, and diversity into the curriculum. We've identified this as a spot for some significant improvements. And I'm working with our department chairs to make those changes. We are looking at revising the existing curriculum to lever leverage student interest in more inclusive gameplay. Not just competitive games. And continuing to make diversity a central focus for our programming with PD sessions with Dr. Michael Dodge. And we're going to continue to work with ESC around grants and opportunities for health curriculum. Forward to the new comprehensive health frameworks, which should be updated this year, which will include significant changes. And include, and shift our focus. And I'm going to now turn it over to the Humanities Department.
Hello again, moving forward, the Humanities Department is committed to providing professional development. That addresses the seven forms of bias in materials and structure with a focus on invisibility. Because we need to align and analyze what's not being included in our books and curriculum. Because it should be identified, addressed, and those gaps need to be filled, much as our committee members have said. We're also going to focus on imbalance and selectivity. Because sometimes stories, sometimes the stories of history are there, but they're one-sided or incomplete. Again, not providing the proper amount of context for students to understand what's really going on. Through this work, we'll also create opportunities for teacher reflection of personal bias within their own practice. We're also going to use this knowledge to address bias in our curriculum. And make revisions to address the diversity and equity of all genders, races, and ethnicities. We're going to create lessons and teach our students how to analyze and question of our instructional resources. And you know, that way they can become more effective consumers of information throughout their academic career. We're also going to work to create new assessments that are free from bias. And address the skills and knowledge needed that are transferable to students. For them to continue to analyze history and apply it to what's going on in the world today. We're also going to provide professional development using materials from, and this is not by any means an exhaustive list. Tolerance.org, the Southern Poverty Law Center, facing history and ourselves. Because we want to train our teachers on having hard conversations and teaching hard history. These conversations are important and we can't avoid them. We have to train our teachers how to be able to have them. And how to be able to create an environment that is safe for students to be able to have them. You know, also provide opportunities for our students through discussion and survey to have a voice in the adjustments to curriculum. To take data from students and really understand what's going on and apply it. Again, I wouldn't want to provide a survey that we don't do something about. So we really want to make sure that we take a look at what's going on and how our students are feeling. The Humanities Department will also support and partake in anti-racist teachers, school, and student-led organizations. Again, having that history lens, because it's so rich here in Springfield. We would like to have the opportunity to take part in and push forward and endorse some of the groups that, that can come out of this. Next, we're going to hear from guidance and counseling.
Good time, I think it was school committee woman Hurst who, who said, what did it reveal? You know, what did, you know, some of the work reveal? And you know, our data, you know, around graduation dropout and our college going rates. Always was something that really required a deep look at. Because when you look at the data and you disaggregate the data, it's very clear. Who's achieving, who's, who's graduating, who's dropping out, it's very clear. And it was so, it's so important, you know, we think about moving forward. You know, it's so important to ensure that we have, we have wonderful counselors. But it's also important to make sure that well-meaning counselors don't engage in practices that further marginalize students. You know, and in order for them to recognize the skills that they need to have. You know, really being clear around race and class. You know, we engaged in some very thoughtful work over the previous school year. Using a book study model to Read Dear to Lead by Dr. Bernay Brown. Where the counselors really explored concepts of discomfort and vulnerability while engaging in equity work. You can't have students be vulnerable if we as adults are not vulnerable. So it's really important that as educators, that we understood. The perspective of students when it comes to issues around vulnerability. We're continuing to engage in professional learning. Using the text, a text called entitled Cast. And it's by Isabel Wilkerson, and she wrote the book The Warmth of Other Suns. And it, The Warmth of Other Suns talks about the Great Migration, and Cast is her second book. And we're going to be understanding issues around equity and inclusion through a shared lens. Because Cast, it provides a social historical context. Excuse me, a social historical context on how we exist in America. And really looking at institutional barriers to educational success for all. I know I spoke previously about, you know, college access and success. And really what Cast is going to do, it's going to really complement our college-going culture strategy. By ensuring that our most marginalized students are able to go from teaching in a classroom to sitting in a boardroom. And you can't be able to get to that without really looking at institutional and structural barriers. And equity is, is at the heart of all the work that we're doing as counselors. We're going to continue having ongoing conversations that enable the examination of implicit bias. Leading to the creations of school leaders who serve as disruptors of systems. That negatively impact positive outcomes for students. And that's so important that, that counselors have the skills to be able to acknowledge this. Because we know what happens from the elementary school level where students can become disengaged. And that really will determine their outcomes in middle school and high school. This school year, we're going to be having a book study on the book Push Out by Dr. Monique Morris. Which examines the criminalization of Black and Brown girls in public schools. As well as educational, judicial, and societal disparities facing Black girls. Our school counselors work with all students and relationships with families are important contributors to conversations and work. That our school district is doing around equity, diversity, and inclusion. And lastly, you know, ongoing curriculum interdisciplinary collaboration with other content areas. Yields greater equity-focused outcomes for student achievement and post-secondary outcome. This work cannot be done with all of those of us that are here presenting this evening. It's done pre-K through 12, where counselors and teachers co-teach lessons. As well as at the district level, where we are focused around those shared goals. And having those conversations about, you know, what does our data look like? And how we could use it to advance the work of all students. Thank you.
In summary, Springfield Public Schools has done a lot of intentional work to support students and staff. To meet the needs of the diverse student body in alignment with the strategic plan. But we do know that there's still a lot more work that needs to be done. And we're committed to supporting the community and closing the achievement gap. And we do know that now more than ever, we need to celebrate the accomplishments and works of our underrepresented groups. And our commitment is that all schools will have a culture free of bias, discrimination, and negative stereotypes. And I do apologize for the length of this presentation, but there were a lot of different contents and curriculums. contents and curriculums that we wanted to bring before the school committee.
No need to apologize, Stefania. These were important presentations, whether the COVID-19 physical plan of our facilities, school buildings, and the cultural diversity, and the race as we continue to move forward. So don't worry about that. Any questions or comments?
I could just say, Stefania and her team, I just want to compliment you doing such a thorough job. Thank you very much. It's outstanding. Right chip. It was extremely comprehensive report. And I think what it did is it gave some, it gave us on the committee some idea and it was so comprehensive to absorb it all at once, it's sometimes very difficult. And you attacked it as you well you should as educators. And I think the point that Mrs. Hurst was trying to get at earlier is while we are, we are educators as well, we are dealing with communities in a different aspect. And I, I think a next step is probably Denise to have a curriculum and program subcommittee meeting where we kind of elicit the current social issues that are going on because that's kind of what we thought when we were going to start this whole conversation. And then we can kind of line up different areas of the curriculum where some things are being done to that particular social issue. By the way, I would include not just the current social issues going on, but that the point you made about historical importance of different ethnic groups in Springfield, while it's not a current social issue, that bears a lot of fruit and kind of line up our curriculums. And here's some things we're doing right now on this particular issue. And here's some things we can do in the future. It lets us interact with the constituencies without doing it in this. I mean, this is a really good educational forum. When we deal with constituencies, it's not, doesn't usually follow that kind of format. Denise, please chime in. If I'm not getting kind of.
No, thank, thank you for that. I think that you, I think that you're right on. I think I would, I would just add, I think that in addition to the curriculum piece, you know, it would be helpful for us as a committee to have some conversations because I think it would be helpful for us as a committee to, and I think that we actually tend to be on the same page, but I think more and more of us are getting a lot of inquiries and we need to be able to respond to our constituents and we need to be able to have access to that information. And I know that we can always pick up the phone and call the superintendent. He makes that very clear. But some of it isn't necessarily always about curriculum or academics. So for example, and I know that you and I have been able to have somewhat of a conversation, but I think that at some point we're going to have to talk about, you know, the, the, the mascot at commerce that has brought, been brought up. Parents are asking about, you know, why we're not celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month and Black History Month in every single school. And when I listened to Carrie Martins give her presentation and she talked about the parent engul, engagement and cultural awareness, it made me think to myself, you know, there are a lot of other ethnic groups that we might be missing or we might not be thinking about because they're not a part of the quote unquote majority that we see here in our city, but they too still need to be recognized. And our teachers and their fellow peers need to also know about them and their culture. So I think I would also like to know like what's happening on the school, in the school building level? Like, are we celebrating and affirming them and those different cultures as well? And then just making sure that when it's possible that as school committee members that we are involved. If there is a place for us to have a seat at the table, that that invitation be extended so that we can be a part of that. But I agree, I think that the presentation was fantastic. I can't imagine the amount of work that went into this. And I, I would like to be able to have a curriculum and program. Me at some point to discuss, you know, the, the.
Broke up Denise. Denise, you froze up. I don't know if you can hear us, but you, your feed has frozen on us.
You're frozen up there. Well, oh, you're bad. Denise, you're frozen up there.
You were, yeah, you were frozen for quite, quite a bit there. Oh, she's frozen down.
Are there any other questions or comments? I'd like to say, I, you know, being a longtime member of the mayor's against LGBTQ discrimination, glad to see that. And, and you know, Springfield does have a rich history and many, as did this news, but the African-American or Black, I mean, showing to John Brown on Showtime now, but we have a strong, rich African-American and Black family roots dating back to the 1850s and a history that translates to the United States. So the more as I think Superintendent had mentioned, Assistant Superintendent Olivia Martinez, you can't, you know, what I, it can't erase history. You can learn from history. And I think people have to understand that. You can learn what bad, what else, what didn't happen again. You can learn about what good has gone on in history that's not being put across. So that's, I think, putting this forward in a comprehensive way to, to celebrate the good that has come from our history and also to call out the issues that had questions that have come from past histories that you can learn from, that you can learn from. So very comprehensive and two important subjects we spoke about tonight. Deeply appreciative of all the work the chairs that are doing in various departments. But please, any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to, Mr. Mayor, say, you know, again, that I, I want to echo the sentiments of School Committee Woman Hurst and that I do appreciate the thorough presentation and the comprehensive information that we received on today. And I do want to say again that I really want to push for us to implement some type of racial equity subcommittee or special committee, even if it's for a year or two, to really help with not just talking about the curriculum piece. So I'm thinking about, for example, one of my children was sharing with me that, you know, the teachers were making the kids show their faces in Zoom and I understand why. They want to know that the kids are there. But this one particular kid in the class was staying in a foster home or some type of shelter. And so the kid didn't come back to class because he was so embarrassed that everybody had to see that he was living in a shelter. And so things like really, you know, teaching people about virtual backgrounds or making it more of a norm to say, for example, we have SPS logo, virtual background that everybody can use or something so that folks are not feeling uncomfortable, right? So that's something that would be discussed. It's not necessarily a curriculum thing, but it is something that people have to be understanding and cognizant of, things that folks are dealing with, who live in certain communities, who are, you know, from certain cultural backgrounds, from certain racial backgrounds. There's just certain things that we may feel like it's not a big deal, but some people are taught like what happens in my home stays in my home, or I don't want people to see what's happening in my home or in the background. So I don't want you to have your camera on, you know? And so these are, these are things that kids can be reprimanded for because they're online learning, but we haven't had those kind of, those level of detail into those kind of conversations. And so I, I just want to throw that out again before we close because I really, really think it's going to be very important for us to, to really combat some of these situations that are really not necessarily in our minds of folks who don't look like me and who haven't dealt with some of the things that I've dealt with. And, and so I just wanted to share that as we get ready to close.
Good points, Ms. Naylor. Good points. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing now, we're going to move the reports to standing committees.
We were just going to have to.
Okay. Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hurst. This was a very, very important productive meeting. Alls in favor, we have to take, we have to take a roll, we have to take a roll because Zoom meeting. So Madam Clerk, please call the call. This is on adjournment.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes. Good night, you guys. Take care.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yeah.
Ms. Perez? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes, and thank you for all of your work, people.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Great job.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, for the special vote, this matter passes. See you in about eight hours or so. Good evening and thank you for watching and good health to each and every one of you. God bless.
Thanks again, everyone.